Hello.
Hello, can hear you.
How are you Joe?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Alright, thanks.
Good, just trying to get set up here. We've still got about another minute and there's folks still in the waiting room. Hey, as soon as these last couple of folks come in through the waiting room, we'll go ahead and get started. So about another 30 seconds. Well, if anybody else joins from here on out, I'll go ahead and monitor that and let them in. But I do have 7:31 on my clock and it is Tuesday, September 15th. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you can see on tonight's agenda, if everybody can see my monitor, we have a whole lot of content, 10 topics, and I'd like to give a fair and equal amount of time to each item. But I'd also like to balance the overall time that we spend together in this evening and not let it run too late into the nighttime hours. So with that said, those who are joining us via Zoom or in the city council chambers, you will be afforded the opportunity for public comment. You will be able to address the city council on matters that are specifically on tonight's agenda after the city council has discussed the item of staff. Of course, members of the public who are present in the city council chambers, listening to the meeting, you will be afforded the opportunity to provide the public comments in accordance with the procedures that are applicable to public comments at an in-person meeting. That primarily means you must have signed in before the start of this, this meeting. And as always, the opportunity for a public comment will be given for any members of the public who are joining us on the conference line, so long as you've provided your contact credentials and the subject matter for which you want to speak about before the deadline, which was also noted on tonight's agenda. Of course, any written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will be read after that topic's been addressed by the council. Now, for those who are going to speak, please keep in mind that you should address the city council as a whole. Please keep your comments to five minutes at length. And of course, profanity or disrespectful speech will not be tolerated in any form or fashion. So with that, jumping in while the water's warm, let's begin with the first item, which is the proposed budget and property tax levy for fiscal year 2021. Director Gallagher, I believe you have a presentation, so I'm going to turn my monitor off and adjust the security settings. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I will. Yeah, no problem.
All participants. Okay. So you should be able to see a share option come up now on your menu bar.
Bear with me for just a moment.
Take your time. On another note, there isn't anybody present at city council who wishes to speak this evening. Just learn that now. Doesn't look like we'll have many members of the public speaking this evening, so it should be a lot of discussion among the council and staff. And I can see your monitor, so that's a good thing.
Wonderful. Great, thank you, Mayor and City Council. If you can still see the monitor and let me know if I need to speak up in any way. Tonight, we are presenting the 2021 proposed budget and property tax levy. The proposed budget was released at the September 8th city council meeting. It is available online at www.citorm.org and we have a copy at City Hall and also at the library. I'm going to jump right in and feel free to stop me. I can't see hands while we're going through the presentation, Mayor, so feel free to, to stop me with questions. This is a discussion, so feel free to stop me at any time, Mayor and City Council. So I'll get started. Before we get started, I do want to show you on the front page of our budget cover. Obviously, we've had, despite COVID-19, we've done some work, obviously, with the census for 2020 and we highlighted that on our budget cover and wanted to highlight that in English and Spanish on the budget cover. The city's budget is our key financial planning document and it is our guide to the city's decision-making process in allocating our revenues and expenditures. Particularly this year amongst of all the years, it really does focus on our financial stability and our sound financial planning. We communicate this information through not only the budget, but we do use the budget the entire year, but also through the audit. Our budget is also highlighted in our audit. Our budget also is highlighted in our capital improvements plan and our city's auditors review our budgets and also whenever we go through a credit rating analysis. Our credit rating agencies, Standard and Poor's and Moody's, provide a credit rating that is very strong and it really does cite the city's very strong flexibility and liquidity. And that's some of the reasons why we've gotten high marks in the past. Both agencies are monitoring our city and in terms of pensions, but again, we have strong budget flexibility and that's one of the reasons why we've been rated so highly. For the 2021 proposed budget, and again, it's a large document, but what we're trying to do is bring it down to some digestible highlights for you and the city council and residents who are tuning in. It does continue the city's commitment to the fiscal responsibility, our high-quality services and our longer-term financial planning. In light of COVID-19, we did have to make some significant adjustments to our expenditure planning. We had to reprioritize operating and capital expenditures. And we know that there's uncertainty. We don't know the duration of COVID-19, nor do we know the final impact. But what we do know is that we've taken steps to help the community, our residents, our businesses and our employees keep safe during this significant time. The city has taken some steps and we'll go through that too throughout the presentation. But initially, when we were working on our initial estimates, beginning in March and April, we estimated a significant revenue shortfall for 2020 and that continues in the 2021 budget. We have taken a number of actions to reduce our expenditures, such as not filling positions, restricting travel, training, reducing and deferring several items throughout the budget, including capital and operating. As we know, our current unemployment rate for, for our area and we're specifically nestled into a certain geographic area for unemployment statistics. As of July, it was 12.6% unemployment. If you recall that in several, just a year ago, about 4% unemployment. So obviously, we're dealing with high unemployment and lower revenues. And that has contributed overall to the city taking early decisive action to ensure that we continue to deliver our high-quality services to our residents and to our businesses. Again, what we did early on was to reprioritize expenditures and also look to our reserves. COVID-19 is one of those unforeseen circumstances that allow us to look to our reserves and to mitigate some of the revenue shortfalls. And that's what we did initially when we provided the city council with an update at the May 19th COW meeting. When we looked at those losses, we took action to release funds into the general fund for unassigned fund balance and then also transfers in from health insurance fund and the liability insurance fund. Our budget calendar and our process begins in January and continues throughout the year. We're always looking at one year, but we're always looking ahead as well. We do our January to May, our budget estimates and requests by city departments. At the June 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting this year, we presented our city's audited financial results for 2019, the budget planning calendar for 2021, our budget parameters, our proposed tax levy, which is a zero increase, and also the proposed amounts for tax levy amounts for our pension funds. We worked throughout June and September after that COW meeting to continue to develop the budget. And then at the August 11th city council meeting, we presented the capital improvements plan. And all of those pieces fill, feed into our entire plan, which is the capital plan into the budget. At the August 28th COW meeting, actually 18th COW meeting, the staff presented the 2021-2025 capital improvements plan to the city council. And then at September 8th, we released it to the, the proposed budget to the city council and to the public. Coming up tonight, again, this is our first discussion and analysis into the budget. And then we have public hearings coming up, the first one being next week for the tax levy for the library and the city. At the October 13th, we will have a public hearing on the city's budget and also the library's budget. And just a note, those notices are published in a newspaper. And also, if residents are, wish to provide testimony, of course, they follow the similar rules to provide information to the deputy city clerk, similar to what we do. Either you can do it in person here at City Hall or virtually and that is also on our agendas. So again, the next meetings will continue the budget discussions. With us wrapping up usually around November timeframe so that we can publish and then provide that to Cook County so that we are able to levy for the next year, even though we're not providing an increase to levy, we still have to provide all of that information to Cook County and many other agencies. The 2021 proposed budget, it is a large document. What we try to do is provide a quick overview on the table of contents and the contents of the budget. Starting on page one, we have a budget overview that follows to some budget summaries. On page 24, page 68 provides the budgets by fund, ending with page 177, which is the appendix. A lot of detailed information flows throughout the budget. And again, this is to highlight the high-level summary for you. We are very pleased that the City of Raleigh Meadows has received, after our submission, the Government Finance Officers Award, which is called the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And it really does recognize an outside entity looking at our budget and going through our best practices and standards. And we're very pleased that we have received this award, which is also a highlight to the credit rating agencies as well. Within the 2021 proposed budget, and again, Mayor and City Council, please stop me if you have any questions. Going through the highlights, first and foremost, there is no tax levy increase. Remember that we levy on dollars, not percentages, but there are no dollars levied as far as an increase for 2021's budget. The largest share of the property tax levy is attributed to pensions, so fire, police and IMRF, and it makes up about 60% of the overall levy. For the general fund, there are transfers in. And as I mentioned, obviously, with that early mitigation that we did, with transfers in from health insurance and also liability, we are following that same past practice for the 2021 budget. Due to the cooperatives being very healthy and helpful in the years of savings, we're able to build those reserves and transfer them over to the general fund. The, the city is actively working on submitting to FEMA and also IEMA through that process. We have also submitted for reimbursement to the CARES Act for the full reimbursement of $316,000. We'll continue to track our expenditures for COVID-19-related expenses and continue to submit for reimbursement. With the additional use of reserves for 2020 and 2021, the city is looking at about a 24.3% fund balance for the general fund, which is in range of our fund balance policy. And remember, we'll get into that, but it's 15 to 30% for overall. There are no rate increases for water, sewers, stormwater or refuse, following our rate stabilization that we have been able to do over the last couple of years. And I think it's just really important to note that there are no rate increases for the utilities this year. Again, capital improvement projects do continue throughout the city. And while some things have been deferred or delayed, we are trying to do our best to make sure that the key projects, the essential projects are continuing. For the general fund, year-over-year, the budget revenue change is an increase of 1.4% or $480,000 and that's primarily due to the use of reserves to mitigate those losses. And then also, the year-to-over-year budget expenditure change is 1.4% for expenditures or roughly about $485,000. Fund structure, and I'll talk a little bit about that briefly. That just lays out all our funds, that's a page in our budget. We like to highlight that so you can see how the, the funds are structured. We follow all of the accounting rules and those funds are grouped in certain categories. The general fund, which is a governmental fund, it's our largest operating fund and it's the one that really accounts for everything that we do as a city. So you'll find everything to do with our city's government administration, all our public safety, fire and police, public works, community development, finance, and all of the other items that go into maintaining the city's services. And also, as with all our city's funds, the general fund is audited annually and follows all the accounting roles related to governmental accounting. And it's something that I think all entities are facing right now, whether or not you're a municipality or a school district, that if, had COVID-19 not hit us, we would have had definitely higher fund balance across our general fund and all of our funds. It's an unfortunate circumstance right now, but it's important that we continue to monitor the situation and keep everybody updated so we can make informed decisions. When we're looking at the general fund for 2021 revenues, the largest slice of the pie is our property taxes that come into the fund and that makes up about 35%, followed by local taxes at about 29%. It's always kind of good to see where the, the diversity lies within your general fund. And our general fund is a very diverse makeup of revenues. For expenditures in the general fund, again, we always talk about the largest operating fund and it, and really it does what it's, it's doing in that it's providing services to our community. 75% of the general fund is related to public safety, so fire and police expenses. And you can see the makeup here as far as expenditures by department. Followed by that too, when you look at the expenditures by type, so salaries, benefits, pensions, all of that relates to about 83% of the general fund's expenditures. And then again, that's because we're municipalities and municipality and we're providing services to the community. A common question that comes up is what is fund balance? And it's a really good question because it really just means that what you have left over after you've spent for the year. So anything that you have left over after you've, your assets meet your liabilities. So it's also your revenues, when you think about that at the end of the day, or your net income in the public sector. We created a slide so that it's very informative to people to let them know there are differences that exist between governmental funds, which is the general fund, and other funds also. And also then, it relates to our enterprise and internal services fund. So the governmental funds, like the general fund, uses a funding fund balance. When you look at the fund summary sheets, you're going to see that, for instance, your ending fund balance for 2021 is going to take your ending fund balance for 2020 and add in the ending surplus or deficit for 2021, which gives you your ending fund balance for 2021. And we'll get into that when you see the summary sheets too, but it's good to make those definitions known so people can review as they go along. Again, fund balance is what you have left over at the end of the day, after you pay all your bills. And it's a little bit different for enterprise and internal service funds, such as like a utilities fund is called a enterprise fund and a vehicle and equipment fund is called an internal service fund. There are some things that we have to call fund balance equivalent, not just fund balance, because of the fact at the end of the day, there are some items that are considered part of the fund balance that you either have to exclude or include when you're talking about fund balance. So it's not a one-for-one calculation when you look at the fund summary sheets. What funds have a fund balance policy? And we have made great strides here at the city. I think it's a really big achievement that we've done over the last 10 years. With the general fund policy, we maintain a range of 15 to 30% of the fund balance to expenditures. And the city has met and maintained that range over the last 10 years. Currently, as I mentioned earlier, 24.3% is the fund balance reserve, which is about two to three months' worth of reserve, reserves on hand. The 911 fund maintains a coverage ratio of one to 1.5 times the annual expenditures. And right now, we're a little bit lower, not much, but lower than we'd like to be because of the fact that we've got a public safety, mobile dispatch, capital purchase that'll be coming up and that's the reason why it's a little bit lower. The refuse fund maintains a range of 30 to 50% of the fund balance to expenditures and the fund is at 30% for 2021 and it's on the lower range. It's something that we do need to monitor to make sure that we're still within the fund balance parameters. Garage fund is one of the newer fund balance policies and that was approved by city council last year. And that fund maintains a range of 1 to 1.5 million and is on target in this policy. We are going to be looking at other policies for funds in the near future. We thought we'd just bring this slide back to show you where we are as a city and that we are maintaining those fund balance targets. Again, the general fund, looking through the years that in 2007 to 2010, there were some years that were obviously negative fund balance positions in the general fund. And it is something when you're using fund balance, and that's why we're talking about it, that there are many reasons that you may use fund balance. And obviously, COVID-19 is one of those unforeseen circumstances and we obviously take this in very seriously when you're looking at using fund balance to cover any shortfalls. In the, in the budget itself, you'll see a general fund balance policy on one of the pages in the general fund summary. And basically, this slide will tell you, and we're talking about fund balance again, where the city sits as a 2020 estimate and where the proposed budget sits at the end of the day for 2021 as an estimate. We can only estimate, estimate what we know at this point in time. And at this point in time, when we're looking at 2020, at the end of the year, and that was with some of the reserve use that we did for 2020, we're looking at about a $10.3 million fund balance estimate for 2020, which would put us at about 30.5%. Going into 2021, that puts us in a little bit better position than we were initially estimating. And that's coming in even with a manager's hold and we'll talk about that in just a moment. But 8.5 or 8.6 million for available fund balance or 24.3% for overall fund balance. Again, in that range, a little bit higher than the midpoint, but at this point, it leaves us with a little bit of room to make sure that we're covering at least two to three months' worth of reserves. The manager's hold, as you're seeing on this page here, and it relates to, and I've footnoted this in the, the summary, there are labor negotiations that are going on. This is following past practice. The auditors also have been told and, and this follows past practice, that we create a manager's hold when there are unbudgeted items that we need to put in the budget, but that you need to note and make sure that you're covering them, even though you're not putting them in the specific line items. So ongoing labor negotiations and some other items are in that manager's hold. This fund balance summary sheet, the next slide for 2021, covers all of the funds in a lot of detail. So I'm going to just again, touch on a couple of things. Use of fund balance, yes, there is some of that. But again, we're looking at the overall picture and how we're looking forward. When I look at it in a more of a graphically tone to it, if you, if you look at that, there's only one fund, the TIF number two, which is the Kurchhoff Owl TIF across from City Hall. We knew that that was a fund balance that is going to be in a negative position until it becomes positive over the term of its TIF. There are no other funds that are in a negative position. This fund has one negative, or this, this is the only fund. There are some funds that use fund balance and these are planned use of fund balance to cover capital or other items. Again, we've scaled back some things, but some capital needs to continue. I'm just going to touch on chargebacks and transfers that is part of the budget. Cost allocation is basically what chargebacks are so that you're charging back funds for the time and service and materials or other items as revenues to other funds. And we do, starting on page 60, detail those out so that it's a very transparent look. Transfers are considered a transfer from one fund to another. For instance, as an example, the general fund transfers funds over to the debt service fund to pay for a bond, the 2012 bond. Also in the budget is a look at the transfers and how they balance for the year. Again, of note, as the liability insurance and the health insurance fund transferring in funds from those funds over to the general fund. And then we have some other fund transfers that are very typical within the budget itself, including one from the general fund over to the vehicle and equipment replacement fund and we'll talk about that. That one is called an inter-fund loan and that one inter-fund loan is in its sixth year of repayment, and it's making incremental payments over the next four years after that. We wanted to turn to the property tax bill. And when we say that, what's our share of the property tax bill when you're a resident? And you're looking at your property tax bill and you open it up. Well, if you sliced out a part of that dollar, 16 cents of every dollar of a property tax that you pay to Cook County is what comes back to the City of Raleigh Meadows to provide services for the community. And when you look at all the other taxing districts, there are lots of taxing districts within this graphic. And I think it's just really And I think it's just really important to know that that 16 cents comes right back and we provide services to the city of Rolling Meadows. We talk about the property tax levy, and it's a page in the budget. When you're looking at our property tax levy, again, we levy for dollars. It is a $0 property tax for next year. I mean, there's no increase for next fiscal year as proposed right now. And that way you can see the comparison from the 2019 levy to the 2020 levy. The police and fire protection is part of our levy, and that funds the police and fire budgets. We have a line item for police pension, fire pension, IMRF pension, a small line item for public works operations, the annual street program, 911 services, and our debt service. But we do want to note that we are coming into COVID with a $0 property tax levy. It is something that should be noted that in years past for police and fire protection to balance the budget, those line items were reduced. There will be a need in the future to take a look at those line items and increase those incrementally in the future, along with the public works line items. But for this year, there is no increase to the tax levy. The property tax levy, again, just a couple of reminders for folks, especially in the audience. It's always interesting how Cook County levies. It's a year in a rears, and if you bought a house, you kind of understand that, but you always have to think, why is that? Well, that's just how Cook County does things. So basically that means that we're funding our 2021 budget with the 2020 property tax levy. The levy is always shown as a previous year. And when you flip through a budget and audit, you'll see kind of that back and forth. Property taxes are paid to Cook County in two installments, once in the spring, once in the fall. As a reminder, Cook County did provide an extension for the due date, and that was to October. Our property taxes are not only reconciled on a monthly basis here at the city, but then at the end of the year, we do a full reconciliation, and then the auditors audit the property tax reconciliation. There are many filings that we have to do with Cook County throughout the year, but the main one is our property tax levy. We have to file that with Cook County every single year after the budget is adopted by the city council. We file it for the library, and we also file it for the city. The city must review and make sure that all of these things are in complete form. And again, the dollar, we levy on a dollar amount and not a percentage. This next snapshot shows you that approximately 27% of the city's overall revenues fund the city's property taxes. The largest share of the tax levy, again, is attributed to pensions. But it's also good to note that we have now, as in the last couple of years, a direct property tax levy line item for the annual street program. And perhaps in the future, that may also increase so that we have a little bit more for roads in the street program. This slide will show you the current debt service payments. I think this is one that the city council has seen. It's good to highlight again that our overall debt service right now, from 2020 to 2023, has a track of a certain amount of dollar payments, and you see that. It will then decrease after bonds are retired, beginning in 2024, it drops off. If you recall a couple of years ago, even prior to our current debt service that we issued in 2018 and 2019, our debt service payments were about $3 million. They're now just above $2 million, even with a new debt service. Our 2021 proposed capital projects, there's a detailed listing, of course, on our website with the capital improvements program. But this slide will give you a bit of a snapshot of the overall focus. And it's a bit of a diverse focus in terms of how we're funding our capital projects. It's about a $1.9 million street program. Even though we're in COVID, across all of our two funds, which is the local road fund and the state MFT fund, we're able to fund local roads. And followed by that, we also are maintaining our streets and sidewalks and anything that maintains our overall roadways. Utilities also has a significant investment. And we've also prioritized those projects to ensure that they continue even in the light of COVID-19. I would like to close there with a few items and just overall, just kind of focusing one more, a couple other items for the city council and for the public. Again, this is unprecedented that we've had to face these kinds of decisions. It's unprecedented not to really know a duration of something like this in terms of having experienced this. This is not a typical type of a recession that we're dealing with. I think what's important is that we continue to update the city council and keep you informed about the financial outlook so we can quickly make decisions. I know within all of our departments, we've reprioritized items, particularly with our large capital purchases. Those are the kinds of things that we're looking out and seeing what we need to reprioritize if we need to again. Keeping everyone safe and secure, obviously, is one of the priority items that we've had, and looking for any reimbursement as well for any COVID-19-related reimbursements. For tonight, after I turn over to you, Mayor, we've got a couple of slide items here with regard to the property tax levy. We were looking for some comments or changes or additions, if you had any, or some comments overall. We were also looking for some other feedback at this point, not necessary. But if you did have some initial feedback or comments or questions, or particularly if you needed some further information on, let us know tonight. And if there were other items for tonight's discussion, what else could we look into for you? And then just as a reminder that the October 20th committee, the whole meeting, there will be another discussion on the city's budget. City manager Crumstock and myself are sitting down with the mayor and city council to complete the one-on-one budget meetings. And we appreciate the time doing that as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, and city council.
Thank you, Director Gallagher. Yeah, those three questions that are on the screen, they're also found on page three of the digital packet online as well. And so to this point or to these three points by show of hand, is there anyone with any questions? Like you said, you are meeting with the council in between now and the next series of committee, the whole meetings. But I think that the conversations you have individually are probably a little bit more explicit than what's given at a high level here. But with that, I do see Alderman O'Brien, so I'll let you have the floor with your questions.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is probably just more of a comment as we all do prepare. I did just have my meeting to review the proposed budget with Director Gallagher and manager Crumstock yesterday. It's probably just more, as we all go through that, clearly, we're all looking through it with that finance lens. And I also do value anybody else's feedback on it. Is the one thing that jumped out to my mind here, since we are in the COVID environment, really looking at things, is clearly, hands down, no hesitation, we need legal guidance and expertise. Melissa in the firm does amazing work. But when I talked to Finance Director Gallagher about, prior to the meeting yesterday as I was preparing, we've had a 60% in legal fee increase. Granted, it's needed, there's no hesitation with that. Just as we're forecasting going forward from 2018 to what's forecasted for 2020 close is a 60% increase. Is I think we might be able to do, I don't know, I know we've got some other topics tonight that could be budget impacts or for the future thing. Just something I would appreciate, I did talk to Director Gallagher to make sure my numbers and my forecasting in the back of the notepad was in the ballpark. And it was, but just something that we all threw, clearly, we need the services. There's no hesitation about that, but that was the one thing that did catch my eye. So just as other council members are preparing, not specifically look at just the legal perspective, but from that perspective overall, is that was just the one that caught my eye that I asked Director Gallagher on and Barry for a little bit more info on over the last few days as I prepared. But clearly, it's needed, no hesitation there, is that was the one that just jumped to my mind is because if the numbers were right, 2018 close was about 265,000, 2019, we were up to 340,000. And then predicted for this year, based on where we were end of August, is roughly about 35,000 a month. So that's 425,000 for the fiscal year 2020. And a jump from 265,000 to 425 in two years is about a 60% increase. So maybe there was some additional information going on, which is fine. And that was, that was my only comment, Mr. Mayor. Currently needed, just something that caught my eye.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Any further questions or comments from the council on this? On this subject of the fiscal year budget and tax levy? If not, then we will continue to hold the meetings with staff and council members. And then we will revisit this topic in October. And any other questions that get fleshed out, we'll hopefully address them on a public platform as we move forward. If that's it from the council on this and from staff as well, I am going to throw a little bit of a curve ball here and jump from item number one to item number eight, which is our social services, right? So the expansion of the police department's social services outreach. And the reason I'm doing that is because I understand Dr. Nieves is on this evening's meeting, and I want to be very cognizant of her time, and then we can get back to the regular run of show. But with that, I would like to jump to topic number eight. And for this, I'm going to defer now to Alderman Sanneika, and let me know if you need the screen for any presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not need the screen at this point, so. And I appreciate moving some of the items around as well, so that way we can all be at our best capacity to consider this item. I think it's important for the council and residents to understand the history of the Rolling Meadows Police Department's outreach and social services models to better understand what's being asked of us tonight. So first, in 1991, the Rolling Meadows Police Department made the decision to create a Police Neighborhood Resource Center, or PNRC, which was a physical space within the East Park apartment complex. And this facility offered comprehensive human services, not just for at-risk residents along Algonquin Road, but the greater municipal area as well. So in addition to social service provider presence, the PNRC was home base for Northwest Community Hospital, School District 15, Harper College, the Salvation Army, and a ton of service providers not funded by the city of Rolling Meadows. But that made a drastically positive impact on residents and families in our community. There's a 2009 article from the Daily Herald by Deborah Donovan included in tonight's packet that describes the value of the center. And a quote from then-police chief Steve Williams said, quote, "I certainly do feel it has helped cut down on crime," unquote. And former mayor Ken Nelson stated, quote, "We would respond to police calls out there in full riot gear. The center began as a tool to quell those sorts of activities and grew into the social service agency," unquote. At the time, the city of Rolling Meadows was a leader in community police partnerships. And this model was so successful that surrounding suburbs adopted our practices and continue to use this comprehensive social services model today with continued success. However, in 2009, as part of sweeping budget cuts in response to the Great Recession, as we saw earlier in the presentation today about the historic general fund reserves, the city council defunded the PNRC and the three staff members that went with it. Today, the PNRC is still operational, but with drastically reduced programming. Currently, the police department has one full-time social services outreach specialist. So this one person is responsible for community outreach and crime prevention, as well as crisis intervention for the entire city of Rolling Meadows. So let me explain a little bit on that. The police receive more than 10,000 calls for service every year. This data, the calls for service, is available in unstructured data formats on our website for any resident who wants to see them. But they're in unstructured data formats like image files. So therefore, robust data analysis is limited. Yet even if we conservatively estimate that only 1% of calls for service include harm to children, domestic violence, drug addiction, homelessness, any other conduct related to difficult situations that require court advocacy, agency referrals, and follow-up, that's more than 100 cases per year of deeply difficult crisis management. And since the police are involved, these are also the most severe cases in the city. This also means that if our single social worker is in court with a domestic violence victim for the day, our social worker is not on-site at the PNRC, is not accompanying officers on calls for service to other locations, and is not assisting other residents with non-governmental agency referrals. So to help with this caseload, the police department was quite innovative, and they approved the hiring of two unpaid student internships per school year. One bachelor's level student in human services, social services or a related field, and one graduate-level master's or doctoral student obtaining a clinical degree in mental health and mental health counseling, psychology, or family therapy. Each year, these students offer over 1,000 hours of free case management and therapeutic services for the city of Rolling Meadows. However, this model is not sustainable for long-term crime prevention and community engagement strategy. Community engagement requires trust and relationship building. With vulnerable and at-risk populations experiencing financial catastrophe, drug addiction, and violence, we're asking our caseworkers to advocate in emergency situations. Those relationships take time, and student interns are temporary. So the city cannot effectively build on the relationships developed by student interns long-term. And without the development of long-term community relationships, the mission of the police department to serve and protect is jeopardized. So now I'm coming to the point for us tonight, to best address the current caseload and to begin to invest in our residents and prevent calls for service or police response in the first place and promote an efficient RMPD, we have to consider expanding our social services division. There are two models provided in today's packet. The first is similar to the Village of Northbrook, which increases our licensed police social service providers from one to two, and potentially adds a social services division director to manage the two caseworkers and two unpaid student interns. The division would continue to operate independently under the RMPD budget. And one of the police social service providers may be stationed within the PNRC to focus on preventative programming in addition to casework, while the other could be stationed at City Hall. The second model for us to consider, and possibly consider as a phase two due to 2021 budgetary constraints, would be to revive our PNRC and adopt our pre-2009 model. The Village of Mount Prospect maintains this comprehensive model. It goes beyond the police department and exists as an independent human services division that reports directly to the village manager and maintains its own budget. For fiscal year 2021, Mount Prospect anticipates annual expenditures of 1.236 million for their human services division. If we exclude the health subdivision, which comprises two nurses in the Mount Prospect model, the annual budget is about $1.05 million for fiscal year 2021. So for tonight, the council is being asked to consider the benefits of these models and provide direction to city staff on how we would like to proceed. So at this time, I will defer back to the mayor for further facilitation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanneika. So with those two requests or inquiries, what I'll do first is open the floor for any questions, comments, concerns. And then after that, we will go ahead and determine the language to use for sourcing these two models and which one the council would like to pursue. Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to hear from our police chief on where he stands on these things. Specifically, I'd like to hear, is there an analysis that the money that's spent in this preventative, if you will, and public service venue actually decreases over time the amount that's necessary to spend in, I don't want to say this politely, but reactive police work where we're responding to the crimes that were not prevented by a good prevention method? So if we could hear from our police chief about where he stands on these issues, that would be very helpful in making a decision.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Chief, if you're ready and unmuted, floor is yours.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. I don't have the exact analytics Alderman Budmats is asking for at this time. I do know that our social service program is very successful. Dr. Nieves does great work for the city, and she does reduce a lot of repeat calls to the police department. She does help remove victims of domestic violence from very hostile environments. Like I said, I don't have the exact numbers to put forward tonight on that. But I know that we also have strong support from the residents of the city, and a lot of that has to do with a lot of work that our social service outreach coordinator does. She does a couple of women's leadership groups. We do a lot of stuff for underprivileged families. So I think it does reduce our call volume to our patrol force. But like I said, I don't have the analytics. I do know that our social worker is extremely overloaded. And you know, as an organization, we're not able to do a lot of the proactive programs, or at least expand upon some of our programs, because or at least expand upon some of our programs because we are more reactive. And like I said, Dr. Neves is on this meeting tonight and she can give you just a little, like a glimpse of, if you want, what her daily schedule entails. And I know the proposal, one of them is for two additional social workers. At this point, you know, it would definitely improve services that we could provide to the residents. I'm not sure. I would definitely like to do further research on that, do more of a work analysis, task analysis, and there's a lot of other issues if we would go forward with that. I do believe strongly that we do, or she does need some additional help and assistance. And we could do some more great things for the residents. If you want, like I said, I could have Dr. Neves just explaining briefly even like what her day was like today. And that might give you a little bit more of a glimpse of what kind of issue she's involved with on a daily basis and how she really is sort of overtaxed and it really does limit our outreach efforts. And like I said, it does reduce a little bit of the level of services we could provide, especially to crime victims. Because I would like to see a more robust follow-up with our victims that we're really not able to do at this point because, like I said, it's almost daily we're responding to ongoing crisis.
Thank you, chief. As a matter of fact, I was going to call on Dr. Neves to give us kind of a rundown of her typical work week, her workload, and also ask some general questions about what a social service provider individual, what the average caseload is from a municipal level, because I know it varies depending on which type of social services are involved and which caseworkers are involved for what aspects. But that way I can understand, or the council could understand, what her current volume is in comparison to others in the same field and what we should try and aim to bring her levels down to and employ others to take some of the burden from her. So Dr. Neves, if you are on the line and available, if you could just give us an illustration of your caseload, typical week, and what this program or what Alderman Sanoyka is seeking the council's approval on would do for you.
Hi, yes. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm going to just tell you really briefly, as briefly as I can, about this week. And mind you, it's only Tuesday. I, so Monday morning, I started really early and I, upon hearing that we had an arrest for domestic battery, I met with the victim, created the document for an order of protection, met them in court, advocated with the state's attorneys, facilitated conversations about the case and took him to a safe room at the courthouse for them to participate in a bond hearing via Zoom. Then I followed up with the CFAS, the Department of Children's Family Services, to discuss child abuse allegations. And then I ran back to the station and I met with another victim whose partner and father of her two children threatened her with a rifle the night prior. And so discussed all the different orders of protection available, the criminal case proceedings in court, option for safety planning. And of course, I had to consult with the Department of Children and Family Services because this all happened as she was holding her toddler. This morning, I met at court with a victim of a sexual abuse case where the victim was assaulted by her ex-partner and the father of two children in front of the children. So I facilitated conversations with the state's attorneys, ensured that she had a protections in place because he is going to be released on bond. So GPS tracking, order protection, of course, safe housing. She's also in counseling and I gave her resources for her children for counseling, who are very traumatized. In the afternoon, I got a call from a victim whose case I, we began in March and there was an arrest back then. And then we've been kind of in court. Court is especially delayed these days because of COVID. But the case is ongoing where she is the complaining witness on a domestic battery case. Then she texted, because we have kind of that positive relationship, she texted my student intern and she told her that he, the offender, had run into her, actually found her after she was walking home from work last night and attempted to choke her. So she wouldn't have reported this had she not had this relationship with us, with our social services division. Then I met with her for a really long time. I put her in a shelter for the next six weeks or so because she's not able to go back to her home and feel at ease. Gosh, what else? Oh, then I had another message from another victim whose case I helped out back in, oh, I've known this family for years. This is an ongoing domestic violence situation where the victim, who's a male, does not want to leave the offender. So we had an order of protection where the offender cannot consume alcohol at the house and not harass or physically abuse anyone at the home. And upon many, many, many phone calls to this home, I finally advocated for this victim, met with the administrative staff at the police station and found out that there was grounds for an arrest and helped facilitate that. So that all really happened because of my relationship and my ongoing contact and follow-up with these folks. Many police departments have social service staff like myself. And really, but many also have social service staff for non-victim situations. So they have senior social workers, they have community social workers, and then they have a police social worker. Well, you know, I see the need for all of those and I just try to, you know, where mainly my main hat is obviously these victims, right? People that have the absolutely most vulnerable of situations and they're really high risk of, I mean, dying, right, or being killed by their partner or ex-partner. So they have to take precedence. But in my quote-unquote free time, I like to do other community service-based social service, really general types of programming, such as the ones mentioned by Elderwoman Sanoyka. So I think the need is there. My caseload is absolutely high. It's extremely high. I wish I had more time or staff to be able to follow up with these cases. I would, you know, I would want to, there's so much wraparound services that can be provided to one person. And sometimes I need a little bit more follow-up. Some cases need a little bit more follow-up than others. But in general, I do my best and I use my student interns. Sorry, I have a sleepy toddler. So, yeah, I don't know if that speaks us to my caseload, but that gave you an idea. I can tell you what I'm facing tomorrow and the rest of the week, but that just gives you an idea of a typical week for me.
No, and we can appreciate that. And I hear the toddler in the background, so we'll be cognizant of your time here. But that's the thing with the work that you're doing, the rapport you're building and the intervention that you were participating in, it's not like a project where it has a start date and an end date, right? These are perpetual, continuous relationships and you wedge yourself into them. Chief, while I have you on here with Dr. Neves, I want to ask, because I don't know the protocol here, but how does it work oftentimes if we're shorthanded in resources in Dr. Neves's area? How many times do we send an officer out to a call that is probably more suitable for a social worker like Dr. Neves as opposed to sending an officer with a badge? Does that happen often? Or is the protocol that a police officer is always out to the scene regardless, right, when the call is dispatched?
Yes, the normal protocol is any call for service, an officer will go. We won't send usually the social worker by herself. Because a lot of times we get information on a report and we might go and it's completely different. And obviously, that could be extremely dangerous, you know. A family dispute might seem like an innocent ordeal until you go there and the actual dispute was an attempted murder and you would hate to, you know, send a social worker. So the officers are the ones that go. There are referral forms, like if Dr. Neves is not working or she's tied up in court or on some other matters. We do have regular forms that the officers fill out for referrals for a host of issues, you know, marriage issues, mental health issues, substance abuse issues. And then Dr. Neves will follow up with those individuals to see if counseling is appropriate or what other services can be provided to those individuals. Like I said, to help the actual root cause of the problem so we don't have a recurrence, as mentioned before. You know, where we could find out what the true problem is and try to address it, whether it's through counseling or referrals to other agencies, so we don't get those continual calls. You know, just for instance, we had an elderly individual that lived in town and she would call us every day, once or twice a day saying her house was being burglarized, her neighbors were breaking in. And through Dr. Neves and our crime-free housing officer, we were able to get her some assistance and we prevented and stopped those calls from happening. And like I said, we took all those calls seriously because we're not sure when one was actually occurring because they were pretty serious allegations made. But that's just some of the things we do. So we normally do not send the social worker blindly into those instances. Usually, first an officer will go.
So I should have specified and backed up two steps and I didn't mean on the initial urgent call. But on the follow-up, right? I know a social worker wouldn't be the first one dispatched to the scene, but that's my fault for not specifying on follow-up situations where there are cases with residents, that there's an established case on an individual. Do we send officers in lieu of a social worker because we don't have them? Or do these residents just not get the attention, I guess?
Yeah, I guess it's a little bit of both. I mean, we will send a social worker for follow-up and she will go, you know, sometimes on her own or she will call, make an appointment to have them come to the station. And there's some issues where we'll send an officer with the social worker. So that's, you know, the one thing with, you know, police work, every, they might seem like every situation is pretty cookie cutter. They're all different and unique in their own ways. So they vary from one end of the spectrum to the other. But on occasion, like, so it'll be all three of those. She could go herself for a follow-up. Sometimes we send an officer, sometimes a person comes there. So it's really hard to say because there really is no one set response. We just try to do what's best, what's the safest path to follow. And we, like I said, what's the most successful, right? And it's all different varieties of responses.
Thank you. So Dr. Neves, in these cases, when your caseload is so overwhelming, you know, the resident issue can't necessarily wait until you have availability. So in this regard, are there a lot of residents who could utilize or benefit your services? You're just too stretched thin at this point? I mean, I'm just trying to illustrate the need here.
Absolutely. And it is unfortunate that I have to say this, but yes, when I have all these domestics and sex cases, they take precedence. I have, I've had to schedule a meeting with a resident that wants my guidance twice already. And they're understanding. And everybody that I meet with, every group that I meet with or community partners, I always ask, you know, I probably, I don't commit to any meetings that are between, you know, nine and noon and then again between 1:30 and 3:30 because I might very well be at court. But people understand and I always, my little spiel, I profusely apologize. I unfortunately have all these other cases that have taken precedence because of the urgency and the potential for further harm if they don't have my attention. So people really understand. But, you know, for example, requests for emergency financial assistance, requests for referrals for substance abuse programs, et cetera, they kind of take the, they become kind of the B pile when we have these heavy, heavy cases.
Okay, thank you. And I do see we have a couple of hands up. So start with Alderman Besessi, then Alderman Beniziano.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for bringing this up. I guess my first, really the questions I have are probably for Dr. Neves as well. I know the proposal here, or at least the beginning proposal here, is two police social service providers. What I'm wondering, you know, and I think the obvious concern you may hear from other aldermen will be funding for all of this. But where I'm trying to go is, I know you have your top priority cases, but then there are other things like financial assistance and that type of stuff. Are the interns able to handle all that well enough so you don't have to go get into it?
So the social work intern, the bachelor's intern, is able to gather the information. But the problem with interns is I don't always have them and I don't always have qualified interns. Like I just had a bachelor's intern begin. This is her first week. And what I'm going to have her really do is focus on these victims, is focus on the case management. So I deal with the initial crisis and she'll be working with them for housing, making sure they have access to the public benefits that they qualify for, counseling for the children. They do a lot of that follow-up. And if financial assistance is part of that, then she would be able to take the application and then hand it to me. Because with our partnership from Salvation Army, I am the one who has to submit it and kind of send it over to Salvation Army for processing. But yes, generally, yes, she could, a student intern, a bachelor's student, she could help with that. But now the masters, the masters and interns are limited to counseling only, only counseling hours, no advocacy or case management.
Okay, so for each social, so if you're able to add even just one, it would be a major benefit to you?
Absolutely.
What I was also wondering about is part, what if it was a part-time position? Would that work in this type of a position?
I think it would work initially. I do think that to have a qualified person that would stay long-term and be able to build those relationships and establish that trust with the community, they would need to stay long-term. That's kind of the problem with the interns. It works to alleviate some of my caseload, but by the time they build a rapport, they're leaving. And I suspect that a part-time person might leave upon finding something that's full-time with benefits.
Yeah, it would really depend on the person. You know, if we got lucky, we'd find somebody who, you know, that's all I could do.
I definitely think it could work.
I'm just trying to come up with other thoughts for staff to investigate. Because I know the two fully burdened individuals of this caliber, I mean, I'll throw a number out there, probably be somewhere, you know, benefits and everything, probably somewhere around a quarter million dollars. So I know what I'd love to see is something we could do, you know, in steps. But you've answered my question. So the bulk of the stuff that, various different things really takes someone, you know, of your skills and the interns just aren't aren't able to do all of the different things. There's several things that just have to get done by you.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, that was kind of where I was going. So thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman Besessi. Really quick, Dr. Neves, how much of the work in your line of work is mechanical versus relational? Where it was highly contingent on the relationship that you've developed?
I would say 100% is relational. This is all about connecting with the person and offering them a different viewpoint. I'm often sitting with someone who has perhaps all these assumptions about what it entails to have had their partner arrested, right? They're not, they're like, you know, sometimes the officers sign complaints on the behalf of the victim and they are extremely annoyed at our department. And I sit with them and I say, you know why we did this? You know, we have a really good conversation heart-to-heart. And I say, I know you're not ready to leave and I'm not asking you to leave this person. to, to leave this person. But here's what I'm concerned about. And here's what, what some of your options are. And I can tell you so, so many times, people have called me years later, hey, remember me? This happened. I can think of so, so many cases like that because I, I'm not there to tell people what to do, how to live their lives, because ultimately they have choice and free will, right? But I'm there to provide a space for even, for contemplating options. I just told this, I just told the woman who was, it was so liberating to her, I was like, hey, there's this law for domestic violence victims, and so you can leave, you can end your lease and not be penalized. And in fact, you're entitled to deposit. And so that was, you know, just that knowledge, and just me even anticipating all the potential roadblocks to someone seeking help and being able to have that heart-to-heart conversation where they are really, really heard, and I don't have an agenda other than at least empowering them to make better choices. It is 100% relational.
So I have a couple of follow-up questions, but I'm going to let Alderman Beniziano take the floor, and then I'll follow up shortly. Thank you. Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things that I kind of wanted to bring up is that I noticed on the list of potential avenues that we could explore with additional help was for our seniors. We have a very large aging population in our community, and I have seen firsthand that I feel like there's not a lot of outreach to them. And, you know, I see it every day that, you know, they don't, unless you are in their home and you're seeing firsthand and giving them that information, it's their generational mentality, they won't seek the help. And I would love to be able to add that to our community, of being able to add more of our senior, you know, outreach programs to help that demographic. And I know that it definitely gets a backseat to, you know, the, you know, the potential issues that you're, you're dealing with on a daily basis. But I really do think it's a population that's being heavily neglected in our community right now. And so I'm hoping that if this, you know, proceeds forward, that we can definitely take a look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. And that, that's what I would like to make very clear in this conversation with Dr. Nieves, the council, and to the residents. This isn't just about one segment of a population that's dealing with, you know, abuse, whether it's physical or emotional or drug-related abuses and dependencies. This is about vulnerable people that exist in our community. And there's many different types of vulnerabilities that the social services officers can lend a hand to. And that, that's what I want the residents to know, not just for one pocket of the community, but Dr. Nieves' work could extend to so many others that are vulnerable in the community that need this sort of resource. And she's just too stretched thin, from my understanding. Dr. Nieves, I still going to hold on to my questions because I see Alderman Cannon has his hand up, and I feel like I've been taking too much of the floor here. Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I really appreciate this discussion because I think we're probably all learning some, about some things that maybe we weren't very versed in. So I do appreciate Alderman Sanoyka's efforts to bring this forward. I guess a question I would just ask the chief to consider for the near future, you know, we get a list from time to time saying how many people we need in other positions. You know, right now, the list that I've seen, there's two police assistants around there and three new police officers. We do have limited resources this year, and especially in light of the fact that we're down at least $3 million. And it's not just about dollars and cents. I understand that. We're talking about people's lives here and trying to save people, and that's important. But we do only have limited resources. So I guess what I would like to see in the near future is to have chief, and maybe with Dr. Nieves, come back and give us some opportunities to look at different options, instead of just saying we need two bodies, one body or half body, and just see how each one of those might affect the program. Obviously, it sounds like we need help. We can't do it all at one time. So I would just ask for people to consider that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Good point. I do know, and I hope Dr. Nieves can validate this for me, but there are statistics that demonstrate that less law enforcement is needed over time if the appropriate social services are available to residents in the community. And so in that vein, if we were to bring on additional social service support that could hopefully reduce the amount of law enforcement officers that we may need in the future. Now, I can't make that determination now, but I do know that studies indicate that if we have more appropriate social services available and resources, that the population will fare better and not fall into the rut of needing more law enforcement. Dr. Nieves, when it comes to your scope of work and the amount of work you have, the work that's mechanical, that just requires logistics, helping an individual coordinate X, Y, and Z for their situation versus the relational work, what would you say generically that ratio is from what we need from another employee, and how much work is mechanical versus how much is based on the relationships? What does that look like?
So I'm trying to make sense of what you're, what you're calling mechanical. Can you hear me right?
Administrative tasks. So you say that if we have an intern, they can, and I don't know what type of tasks they are, but an intern can handle making phone calls, coordinating appointments, you know, that sort of work. It's mechanical in nature, right? It's administrative. It's just taking care of tasks. I know each case has a certain mix of tasks, and then actually dealing with the situation from, from a psychological perspective. What does that, what does that look like? What does that breakdown look like?
I don't know if I have like a ratio. For example, today's phone call with the safe house where we securely housed the victim, it took about two hours, and maybe a student intern could have done that task. But it required a level of knowledge and a level of experience and previous knowledge that I needed to be there. They were asking things of the client to do an intake with the phone before they take them in, that I had to almost translate to them because they're so technical, they're so professional language, that I had to almost tone it down to normal language for people. So maybe that's something that a student that is highly, highly trained could have done, maybe at the middle of their internship, after they've learned the lingo. I'm just not equating that mechanical work with a student intern. Perhaps like that going, filling up in order, filling out the paperwork for an order of protection, that that could potentially fall under the mechanical, but there's so much relational to it because there's so much of, well, like, do you have a pet? You know, these are things that you need to remember to add to an order of protection, for example, or working out arrangements for visitation with the children that I also like to include in these types of orders. So there's so much that requires knowledge and the relationships. Like, when I have one of these, I go to the sheriff's office and I check in. I'm like, hey, I'm going to have one of these. Just FYI, can you, can you make sure that service is offered? Or there's so much of, of the different connections and the stakeholders that I work with that need to be, needs to be finessed. There's, there are certain phone calls that a case manager, student intern could do, for example, to make sure that someone has access to medical care if they don't have, if they haven't had that. I've had to do tasks as mundane as, as running to Meyer to buy a, a phone for a victim that, because I had to do that several times where the offender leaves them without any money, communication, et cetera. So that's something a student could do. So there are like tasks like that that come up that could be done by someone that isn't necessarily like an expert in the field. Does that answer? I'm not sure if I answered.
It helps. It does. What it basically, what I was trying to figure out is that, and you've answered the question, is that there is a significant amount of interdependency between the tasks that need to be done for the person's situation, but also the level of knowledge you need about that person in their situation in order to accomplish any sort of objectives, right? You can't just take and remove tasks from the situation from the person. It's all interdependent on it. And so we basically need a skilled, qualified individual to handle the volume that you cannot.
Yes. Yes. It's heavy, heavy skills. I have my students attended 40-hour domestic violence training, or 40-hour sexual assault training, a DCFS mandated reporter training, and I, my style of supervision is almost as an educator as well, because there is such, so much information, such specifics to this particular field, that there is no school that is, has a program or a class on police social services. So I really have to teach them this trade very well, if that makes sense.
There's, there's no class on life, is what you're telling me?
Hey, you never know these days, but I haven't found one on police social work yet.
No, thank you. I do see Alderman Beniziano, your hand is up. I don't know if it's Legacy or if you, if you want the floor. And if you do, it's yours.
Thank you. Yes. Something in, Dr. Nieves, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I know for, like myself, being a mandated reporter, so like when I call and, and have to report to APS, Adult Protective Services, the report has to be firsthand. You know, so I'm assuming that's, you know, the same for yourself. So, and I'll explain that is that, you know, if I go into a home and I see something that I need to report to APS, it has to be firsthand reported to APS services. So meaning that I can't delegate that to, you know, someone in my, you know, our office to report that, you know, then to APS. Because I witnessed it, I have the concern, I have to be the one to make that report. So I'm assuming the same then, if Dr. Nieves is in the home or dealt with the victim, you know, the one would have to be the one to, to make these reports. And that's where that relationship kind of comes in, and where the interns, I'm assuming, can't help with a lot of that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Nieves.
No, you're absolutely correct. And the interns, because they're student interns and they have limited experience, I don't delegate many, many tasks to them. So I keep the tasks very minimal. Like I said, incredibly helpful. That's why I kind of bother with two. But still, it's very minimal. And yeah, so the DCFS reports to the child abuse hotline, or the Adult Protective Services hotline, reports that I do are quite extensive. I kind of wanted to touch on that real quick. There is many, many victims of domestic violence that are seniors. And unfortunately, they are really reported when it, when it's at its worst, because they don't want to report it because the offenders are their, their own children. I actually just went to court with an order of protection for protecting a senior on Friday. So, and of course, there's an associated report of, for Adult Protective Services, and that, those I have to do, and no matter how long it takes, that they have to take precedence.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that little bit of information. Hopefully, Mr. Mayor, that helps clarify a little bit more for you as well.
It does. You know, all of this is new to me, and I just, I, I'm understanding that there's a tremendous need in our community, and it can't do anything other than benefit the community at this point, especially if it's got such support from Dr. Nieves, and has support from the chief. And the council can see that there's value in helping our residents when they're pretty much at their most vulnerable or low. That is exactly what we should be doing as a municipality. I do see Alderman O'Brien's hand, and then Alderman Diasis after that.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just to kind, I think, thanks, Alderman Sanoyka and Dr. Nieves and Chief. I think there's a clear need for this. I think my only thing too is, and it's my understanding here, too, and Chief, you can jump in if you need to correct me. I think we just got back to full staff in terms of sworn officers from when we had to do all the layoffs and everything in 2008, 2009. So I'm hoping I'm not understanding the conversation where we'll have to do one, if not the other. I really think this is an opportunity for collaboration, is that we wouldn't have to give up a sworn officer to hire a social service. I would not be in favor of that by any means. And I think this is a collaboration. If we have to have bake sales or car washes to get the funding for this, because I know it was unbudgeted, I'm in full support of one to start with. If we can manage and do two, and there's a need for two after Chief and Dr. Nieves does the research, I would support that. Just since it would be unbudgeted, and we are in that budget time, I just want to make sure that we wouldn't be sacrificing one officer to bring in here when there's such great collaboration with Dr. Nieves and the officers. But no, I'm in full support. I'd like to put our foot in the water with one, since that would be a huge help, because I think we'd be able to certainly find funding for that. And then if there's clearly the need after the research for two, maybe we do have some car washes and bake sales to make this happen, because there's a, there's a clear need. So I would be in support of one for sure, and then we can go from there. But thanks, Dr. Nieves, and Alderman Sanoyka and Chief for all the great work. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Diasis and Alderman Budmetz?
Thank you. Back when we had the PNRC, I recall that, that the apartment complex provided the city an apartment at no charge, that we staffed with sworn officers that could assist. And then that was the beginning of the PNRC, and then we began to expand that. And that's when we got hospital involved, and that's when we got various other agencies involved with that. And at its peak, it was doing very well. And I'm just wondering, since that was such a model that worked so well, should we not re-investigate how well that worked and see if that might be something we can hang our hats on once again? I'm going to, you know, be the bear in the room that says a million dollars, you know, that'll buy a whole lot of police officers, fire officers, inspectors, and of course, social workers. And I think we need to prioritize what is important, not that this is not. Okay? This is important. But I think we need to look at the city as a whole and see, create a priority list of what we can do. And I would kind of go along with Alderman O'Brien, that if we've got to test the waters with hiring one qualified individual, let's see how that works and move from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Diasis. Alderman Budmetz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just thinking in generalities, but in the past few years, we've, we've had legalized gambling come to Rolling Meadows, and we've had legalized marijuana come to Rolling Meadows. And there's, there are social impacts with allowing these, these elements to have a foothold in our city. And, and so it feels to me that it's socially irresponsible of us as a council not to earmark some of the funds that we're getting from these, from these taxes on these organizations, and not using them for, to, in some way mitigate the social damage that is caused by drugs, and is caused by gambling, and it is, and is, it is affected by our residents. So when, when we are taking those dollars and just throwing them into the general fund, and then that, and then that compensating to our residents, then we're lowering the overall quality of life of our residents when we don't, when we don't use those funds. And I think some of them, even by the state legislator, are earmarked for just those purposes. And so we can, we can do that ourselves and say, okay, if we're going to collect, for purpose of conversation, $100,000 in taxes against those kinds of things, then why can't a third of it or half of it go to social care for our residents who are affected by the, the effects of drug abuse and, and similar problems? So I just, that's where I'm going with the conversation. So if anybody wants to comment, I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear thoughts to the contrary. Thank you.
No, Alderman Budmetz, not to be predictive, but I believe Alderman Sanoyka will touch on that. I see your hand is up. So Alderman Sanoyka, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want, I don't want to stop any of this conversation because it's all excellent. And I feel like a lot of people are gaining great information to fully understand the possibilities available to us. And I feel like a lot of people are gaining great information to fully understand that the possibilities available to us. And and how we we may be able to identify that these types of funding revenues. So as Alderman Budmets has stated, you know, those types of funds are earmarked. Nature's Care is required as a recreational marijuana facility to provide revenues specifically for social service outreach activities to the city. And and there are potentially other revenue streams that are also earmarked specifically for that purpose that could that could fund this. The PNRC currently is is funded not through the budget. So if everyone who's been doing their their budget meetings with Director Gallagher and Manager Crumstock, they'll note that in the budget, it says that none of those funds include the the drug asset forfeitures. And those, but those monies are being utilized for the community and that's what's funding the PNRC. And Chief can speak more to how how those resources are being utilized. I did want to make a point about about how to proceed going forward because as we've heard from from Dr. Neves, this is not something that I would want us to to postpone and I would be in favor of a phased approach. I realize that going to the pre two thousand nine model where we had a PNRC is a really great goal and I support Alderman Diasis's suggestion to proceed with researching that idea to determine if that makes sense for us today. And if the benefits, as Alderman Cannon demonstrated, would affect the entire ecosystem of our municipality in a benefit in a beneficial way in in all aspects, financial and 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 for the effect on the quality of life of our residents. So I I think that this recommendation for two bilingual police social services, social service providers is a recommended minimum that we would want to start with. And given the situation of COVID nineteen and how it's affected our health as a community and our economy at the at the local and state, national, global level. That's usually when social services are even more needed because those are typically counter cyclical. And so for our fiscal year twenty twenty one, I think, of course, I would want all of the the research that Chief Nowacki will need to do from a management level and come back to council stating, here's here's what it's going to cost. Here's here's what I can do. Here's where I need help from the council in in meeting, making the ends meet. And then from there, perhaps longer term, seeing if we can create that pre two thousand nine model.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. So just for my edification and clarity, as it stands that the request for a council and a straw vote here is to include at a minimum two additional full time bilingual police social service providers. Is that the straw vote that you'd like me to to request to cast a votes on?
Yes, that is the straw vote that I would like us to cast the vote on with the understanding that if if Chief Nowacki needs help identifying those revenue sources, that the council will then respond.
Okay, I mean, that's that's fair. And I I know when it's up to us in our professional lives with our our project budgets that we have to augment where we allocate those funds in order to make sure that we stick within parameters. And I understand we have managers hold and not that we can absorb all of that here. But we do need to augment our spending in order to bring better social services to residents who could benefit from them. So if there's any further questions or comments at this time, like the council members to raise their hands so they can go ahead and share them. And if not, then I'll put the straw vote up or account. Alderman Cannon.
Thanks, Captain, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would just ask for the straw vote to also offer just one position. Please.
Okay, so if you'd like me to then break this apart and Alderman, Alderman Sanoyka, I know you brought this to the floor. Are you okay with that in the sense of getting a barometer to see where the council stands overall? So it's not all or nothing at this point, or how do you feel on this?
Yes, I'm fine with amending the straw vote to determine if this is all or nothing. I also don't anticipate this being the end of the conversation. It sounds like the consensus from the council from discussion is that everyone's interested in understanding how we can achieve the best possible outcome and and optimize our staff and that we don't necessarily have the data at this point. We have the need, but we may not have the data. So and I I just want to make sure that we have clear direction towards Chief where perhaps we can say we definitely want one. Is it fair to the council to say we definitely want at least one full time bilingual police social services provider? And we would like to know what the the anticipated need is long term. And then long term, how we can build off of that into a phased approach. So very wordy, but is it clear what what is being asked of the council right now?
Yeah, from from my seat, it's clear to me if the council's unclear, raise your hand now so we can make clarification. I do see Alderman Bessesi, your hand is up, so you can have the floor.
Yes, just just one more thing that I would like, you know, pending this this straw vote, the chief to do is also obviously, we need to look between him and City Manager. The funding for this.
Yes, and I think those those answers and and both questions will come from the outcome of where the council's vote is, I'm pretty sure. Let's just, we'll take the vote and then from there, I know that the the questions and answers that the chief and city manager will have and have to address will will be derived from this, from the outcome. So with that, let's take it sequentially, chronologically here and just those in favor of hiring one bilingual police social service provider, please raise your hand in favor of one at this time. I see Alderman, I'm gonna wait till they all come in, you know, tally them off. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Bessesi, Alderman Cannon, Alderman Budmets, Alderman Beniziano, Alderman Sanoyka and Alderman Diasis. And so that's unanimous for for one at this time, which is solid direction. And now the next one is going back to what the original proposal was, and that's to have minimum two full time bilingual police social service providers. So those in favor of two. So if I had a vote, I would be in this one as well, but I have Alderman Sanoyka and Alderman Budmets in favor of two as the minimum. And now you can lower your hands and just to clear the cover side of that, those opposed to two at this time. Those in opposition to two employees are Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cannon, Alderman Beniziano and Alderman Diasis. Thank you with that. And so from this Chief Manager Crumstock, you can see that the council is very much in favor of at least adding one more full time bilingual social service provider. If you can do us a favor to keep the dialogue moving on this subject and hopefully create something in the budget for for next fiscal year, bring us back a little bit on on what the needs are from your end for the council to provide back and any other ancillary items that we will need to help get to this end goal. And so with that, Alderman Sanoyka, just want to ask, because this is your point, anything further or are we okay to move on?
At this time, I think that staff has clear direction that we are interested in pursuing this topic in the future. I just also want to reiterate that we don't want to to wait too long. So is it necessary to put a a deliverable timeline on this at this point?
Let's ask Manager Crumstock or Chief. Let's start with Manager Crumstock from from the budget aspect and even Finance Director Gallagher. When when do you think you'll be able to give some clarity for the council? How much time would you need?
Obviously, we would have to run some numbers, but again, as we mentioned, in the manager's hold, this is not in there, but that's all part of the discussion that we would have with everybody. Because there are, obviously, we don't know where the unions are going end up and with some of the other discussions. You know, it it could be one of those other items in the manager's hold that picks this up, but that's all part of the discussion. It really goes back into that we would be back in October, but we're trying to push this. You know, for that next cow, we should have everything, but we're trying to push this as quickly as we can get a staff report, two people is probably three weeks and then four weeks you would see it.
Okay, so is it is it fair and achievable to have this on the next cow in October?
Yep, that would be the plan.
Okay, so Alderman Sanoyka, we can see that we'll revisit this conversation in the October's Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I I have no other items for this.
Okay, quickly in closing, Alderman Bessesi, I see your hand came up.
Yeah, given that we want to expedite this as best we can. You know, and and hopefully we'll have our numbers and and some data by our next cow meeting. I'm wondering if we should put the topic in closed session regarding personnel.
I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll we'll listen at the next October Committee of the Whole. And from that point forward, the following city council meeting, if necessary, will take that into closed session personnel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now circling back to where we began with the line item after number one is number two, and that's the fiscal year twenty twenty one proposed street resurfacing program. And so with this, I'm not sure if there's any presentations. But I am gonna kick this off and back to now, this is Director Horn. Are you going to take this or is Joel?
I've got it, Mayor, thank you.
All right, floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to discuss this year's program. It is a program we have done consistently over the last four to five years. So I will try and keep it fairly brief, but there are some things I would like to bring you up to speed on. Also, in the on the meeting today is Ryan Lindeman, the city engineer, who will be here to fill in any gaps or answer any questions you may have at the end of the discussion. As we do each year, over the last recent years, in September, we try to make the city council aware of what we are planning for the following year. Following this Committee of the Whole meeting, city staff is hoping to bring engineering contracts for consideration to start the design work for the twenty twenty one program. We are recommending a full rehabilitation program next year, which includes about a one point one million dollar road resurfacing pro program, along with an eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollar road reconstruction program. Now, we designed those projects at the end of this budget year so we can bid those projects out in the first quarter of next year. By doing that, the city is able to take advantage of early bid pricing, which has proved successful over the last several years. We have attached in your packet on page two is the proposed program for the twenty twenty one resurfacing program. As part of that program, staff developed and massaged the program based on the pavement condition index that was performed in twenty sixteen. Utility project needs, geography, neighborhood impacts and known drainage concerns. I can discuss the reasoning behind some of the project, the limits of the project, if there are any concerns. Otherwise, I will move on. The program is planned at about one point one million dollars with the understanding that early bid pricing will come in much lower than that. We have learned, especially because of I dot requirements, that it is better for us to over design the project and eliminate one or two cul-de-sacs proposed in the plan to avoid to maximize the dollars we're spending and to avoid having to go back to I dot and add additional roads if the bid prices come in lower than design than than what we would design. The roadways proposed, many of the roadways proposed were originally part of a project in that was performed in twenty twenty nineteen. We deferred these from being done in twenty twenty so we could do the project impacted by the water main replacement bond that occurred this year. We also included this year two streets that are are known to be bad, Hoover Street and Hoover Court. Because the two roads that were originally planned are close to South Street. And that road is, which was part of the water main replacement program this year is scheduled to be resurfaced in twenty twenty two. So we're trying to coordinate those projects to be more geographic in close to each other and and not to impact the neighbors on a recurring basis. Excuse me. The other project we are performing in twenty twenty one or we're recommending is the annual road reconstruction project. The recon, the reconstruction program that was originally supported by the city council about four and a half years ago has been very successful to date. The first two years, we did the Arlington Quentin Ridge area. That was originally proposed as a three year program and we were able to complete it in two years. The next program was the Meadow Edge subdivision, which again was originally proposed as a three year program. And we're expecting to complete that next year, which means it will have been completed in two years as well. The the reconstruction program in years, the years following will include the Plum Tree Home subdivision, which is immediately west of the Meadow Edge subdivision. Again, these are all roadways that were constructed in the late seventies, early eighties with what's called a pozolonic base. And it's been known to fail regularly. So we're trying to reconstruct those roads so we can get the full life cycle out of the roadway in future years. Other program, projects of note that I thought was important for the council to know about are listed on the fifth page. And I will give a brief description of each project, but I think as I was putting it together, I realized that all the projects listed that we plan on undertaking in twenty twenty one have something to do with grant funding that we have received or expect to receive. As a matter of fact, staff and the city engineer are responsible for securing over seven million dollars in federal funding as noted on this page. The first project is Arbor Drive, which will be the second phase. We will submit for that in the upcoming year. The city did receive almost three hundred thousand dollars for that program this year. Which we have, I believe, the city engineer will tell me should be being completed within the upcoming weeks. It is unsure at this time if the Cook County will offer this program in the future, but we will keep the city council up to date on that. The Algonquin New Wilkie project, that's the third phrase, third phrase of the Algonquin Gulf Road and New New Wilkie Triangle improvements. This will be funded at an eighty twenty split with three and a half million dollars received through the STP grant. Arlington Heights and Rolling Meadows will split the twenty percent share fifty fifty fifty. That's currently undergoing phase one engineering and we do have an approved intergovernmental agreement on that project. The next project is the Weber Road Reconstruction. Staff worked very hard with Northwest Municipal Conference and the Illinois Department of Transportation to have this segment of roadway re re identified as a approved FAU route, which means it is now eligible for grant funding. And as a result, the city engineer applied for and was And as a result, the city engineer applied for and was successful in getting about $1.4 million earmarked for that project for a full reconstruction. Again, that's an 80/20 split as part of the STP program in which Arlington Heights will pay 50% of the 20% local share. The next project is the Quentin Road Bike Path. Again, city engineer was very successful in securing CMAC funds. That's the congestion mitigation and air quality program. That that those funds have already been awarded. The Phase One engineering has been completed, and the engineer has started on the Phase Two engineering this year. That that project, this bike path essentially goes from Euclid Avenue on Quentin Road all the way down to Hartong East towards the creek. So it's a significant bike path improvement. And the last project that we're we're going to be working on in 2021 is the Meadow Brook Bridge Replacement Project. The city engineer may be able to describe this further if there's questions, but he has applied for preliminary funding approval through the Illinois Department of Transportation. They have a separate funding mechanism for surface transportation program for bridges only. And we have preliminary approval for approximately $1 million in funding once the Phase One engineering is completed. I tried to keep the discussion brief, so if there are any questions, comments, or concerns, I am happy to answer any questions. And again, the city engineer is also available to respond as well.
Thank you, Director Horn. And just before I start calling on council members, this was primarily for discussion and presentation purposes. You were not looking for direction from the council on any aspect, are you?
No, no, sir. This was simply a precursor to what's going to be presented in next week's city council packet. I just wanted to make sure the council was not taken off guard by that, those items.
Perfect, thank you. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and allow Alderman Snoyka to take the floor, and then Alderman Cannon following.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Horn, this this might be very quickly, very quick. I just wanted to ensure that the usage of the of the pozolin replacement, is that just a descriptor that's being used here? Or was there something defective in the mix of the of the concrete and the pozolin that that we are mentioning why we're replacing all of the pozolin streets specifically?
Yeah, the, thank you. It can get really involved, but I'll keep it brief. The pozolonic base, and Ryan could could chirp in as well, but the pozolonic base material, generally, they, what they did is when they put the stone down to build the road, they mixed cement into that gravel. And as a result, the conditions had to be perfect for placing the roadway on that. In many cases, the roadway conditions when they placed it was not perfect. And as a result, the base kind of kind of formed into big chunks of like, look like concrete. When you dig it up, they come out in big chunks rather than smooth. And as a result, when you drive down a pozolonic road, you get a lot of bumps, cracks that go across the entire road where you you drive 20 feet, and there's a bump and a bump and a bump constantly through. And the reality is, it's just, it's just not a road that you can just resurface. It cuts the cuts the roadway life expectancy by half. So for example, a lot of the roads that the city council, when we talked about this program four or five years ago, we recommended as a staff that we not do what had been done historically, which was resurface those roads, because we're only getting 10 years out of the road when we should be getting close to 20. And so that's why there was a commitment by the council to develop a 10 to 15-year program to eliminate those reconstructions. But quite honestly, we shouldn't need to be, we shouldn't need to really do reconstructions after the pozolonic roads are gone if we have a significant road resurfacing program, which we should have once the reconstructions are completed.
Thank you for that historic context. I really appreciate it. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you. Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick thoughts. If anybody wants to visit a street like that, if you want to come down Silent Brook off of Quentin, you can bounce all along for about two blocks. A couple of couple of points I'd like to make, or a question I have first. I noticed that we're all gonna be the lead engineers on two projects with Arlington Heights. Why haven't they taken one of them?
Yeah, well, I I don't know. That was an agreement that was made historically before I ever came to Rolling Meadows. They really don't have the same desire to get those roadways completed as we do. However, we did request that Arlington Heights Heights take the lead on the resurfacing of Wilkie Road, which did also receive money, I believe about $2.5 million through the STP program, which we do not plan on getting involved with until, I believe it's 2023 or 2024. And at that time, we will enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Arlington Heights, and we will not be doing the the lead engineering on that project.
Great. I just want to make sure that they're taking their fair share. I guess the last, I would just like to make a general comment. The last few years, my word has been the beneficiary of a lot of the restructuring, the reconstruction. And I just think the rest of the aldermen should compliment Mr. Horn and his group and Ryan Lindeman. They've done an absolutely wonderful job. If you talk to the residents in any of these streets that have been redone, they've reached out to all of them when there's been issues. Obviously, with construction, there's always issues, and they've done a wonderful job of keeping people at bay and working through the issues, so everybody's pretty happy. So I just wanted to say thank you for the great job both you guys have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, and I would just echo your compliments to our city engineer. He's done an outstanding job both in the office and in the field.
Thank you all. You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further questions, comments, or concerns from council? Well, Director Horn, it doesn't look like there are. So thank you for keeping this this one brief, but bringing this information to our attention. And we will move on to the next item here, which is the following page here, page 15. And it's the four on our list here, and this is gonna be an interesting one. The Freedom of Information Act, Better Government Association versus the City of Chicago Office of the Mayor. And for this, we'll turn it over to Attorney Wolf. When you're ready, Attorney Wolf.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I am presenting tonight on an interesting case that's very recent, and it impacts the Freedom of Information Act and how private messages from public officials and public employees are implicated by this recent case. So this is going to be a brief FOIA training specific to your private electronic messages. So I'll get, I have a PowerPoint presentation which has been attached. Mayor, if we can share the screen, I can move through that presentation. And and then I will open up after the presentation for general questions.
And Attorney Wolf, you should have the privilege to share your screen. Just let me know if you don't.
Okay, let me see.
And we can see your screen now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So here's our title page. I'm gonna start this from the beginning. Okay, great. So we are all generally familiar with the Freedom of Information Act, but this is the law that allows governmental records to be open for public scrutiny. In specifically detailed in FOIA is the public policy behind the purpose of the act, and that is to allow complete information to be open to the public so that the affairs of the government and the official acts of the public officials are open to the citizens. Public access has been deemed necessary so that the city is enabled to have full and free discussions, make informed political decisions, and and so that the public can monitor its government so that everything's being conducted in accordance with public interest. Public records are defined under FOIA. And it basically, I'm not gonna read the entire definition for you here, but it's all forms of records and documents, whether they're electronic or in paper form. But a public records qualification, unique qualification is that it has to pertain to the transaction of public business. So not all records of the government are necessarily public records. They have to pertain to the transaction of public business. And this is going to be an important component as we discuss, you know, the electronic communications that are on the personal devices of our officials and our employees. So as I was discussing, basically, you have to meet a couple of elements to qualify as a public record. And again, especially as we're talking now about private, you know, communications or communications on your private devices. So to qualify as a public record, the record must pertain to public business, not private affairs. In addition, there has to be, the public body has to be implicated. There has to be a particular nexus to the public body. So that means that the record has to either be prepared by the public body, prepared for a public body, used by the public body, received by a public body, possessed by a public body, or controlled by the public body. So these are the two components that, you know, determine whether or not a record is in fact a public record. Public body is defined in the in FOIA as as detailed here. And so obviously, the city is definitely a public body. But what's important to know is that the committees and commissions and subsidiaries of the city are also deemed public bodies under FOIA. So communications with respect to those entities also are encompassed by the act. So how are we to treat records maintained in personal email or text accounts? Now, I'm gonna be talking a little bit about some of the new requirements or or more specified requirements under this law, this case, Better Government Association versus the City of Chicago. But what's what's not new is that, you know, the records, certain records maintained in personal email or text accounts could have been deemed public records if they pertain to public business and certain other circumstances took place. So, you know, what has been consistent is that certain communications stored in a public official's email or text account may be subject to disclosure under FOIA. That that is not new, and that's been discussed in prior case law. But, you know, as as we're analyzing this, there are some changes that did come along with this law that changed the landscape. But again, in order for a communication stored in in a personal email or text account to be subject to FOIA, it would have to pertain to public business, as detailed in bullet point number two. Private communications not pertaining to public business are not subject to disclosure under FOIA. In addition, communications and personal accounts must be that of the public body and not just that of the public official. So we'll talk about that a little bit more, but in other words, there must be a nexus to the city that actually implicates the city or the or the other public body, for instance, the commission or the committee. So communications that are subject to disclosure are detailed here. Communications pertaining to public business that are sent or received during a public meeting. So again, we have the two elements. It's relating to public business, and there's something that implicates the city. So the sending or receiving of a communication during a public meeting creates that nexus. In addition, communications pertaining to public business that are sent or received by a quorum of the members of the of public bodies. So we're talking about personal communications here. So if a personal, on a personal device, I should say. So if there are personal text messages that are on, you know, like a group text message with a quorum of the members of the public body, and those text messages relate to public business, that's a FOIABLE document. So because it relates to public business, and there is the nexus to the city, that being the quorum of the members of the public body communicating. And what is, what has been detailed in addition in this new case is that communication communications of decision makers of the city may be subject to FOIA if that decision maker has unilateral authority to be to act on the city. So in a managerial form of government, you know, the manager and the mayor, and sometimes maybe a department head, may be implicated in this in this provision. And this is what changed the landscape in this new case, Better Government Association versus City of Chicago. This was not detailed before. So personal communications pertaining to public business, where the public official has the authority to make a unilateral decision, could be subject to disclosure. Again, this is not private information. This has nothing to do with the private affairs of our officials or our employees. But if it relates to public business, even if it's on your personal text or email account, it could be subject to FOIA. And in determining which officials have that authority, the relevant inquiry is, can the official function alone as a public body without having to convene a meeting? So, you know, depending on, an analysis would have to be done on a case-by-case basis to determine whether that particular official, if a FOIA request is coming in for personal email or text messages from that official, whether or not that official would function as the public body. And it would be dependent on a case-by-case analysis. So what happens when a FOIA request comes in for records that are maintained on a personal email or personal text account? There are a couple of things that have to take place. First, the public body has to ask the public official or employee whether or not their email or text accounts are used for business-related purposes. If the answer is yes, the public employee or official has to conduct a reasonable search of their personal accounts to determine whether or not the records exist on those accounts. The critical issue is whether or not documents might exist, but whether the agency did an adequate search. So and when I say inadequate search, that means that the city is obligated to make the inquiry as to whether that official has documents or public records maintained on their personal account. I don't mean that the city can take your computer or your cellphone from you and and do a search on your private device. And that's where this next bullet point comes into play. Public bodies are not required to perform an exhaustive search of every possible location for a public record, but must search the places that are reasonably likely to obtain responsive records. And an appropriate search is done via the inquiry of the public official and the public official's response to that. So another addition in this new case is that in responding to the FOIA request, there's an affidavit requirement if there are no records. So of course, if the public official finds records on their personal phone or personal computer, they'll turn over those records to the city's FOIA officer. But if there are no records on the personal email or text accounts of that public official or employee, that person must provide the city's FOIA officer with a reasonably detailed affidavit setting forth the kind of search that they did, and then attesting that their accounts don't have records and all accounts likely to have records were searched and no records were found. So this affidavit requirement is, has been added by this new case law. So what are the best practices so that, you know, the city can maintain and properly maintain its public records and properly respond to FOIA requests, you know? You know, these practices were actually detailed in this new case, and one of them is to avoid using personal email or text accounts to send or receive communications pertaining to public business. If you don't have any communications on your, on your devices, you're not going to be required to be turning over any, any records or any communications that were on your own private devices. Another best practice is to inform others that communications pertaining to public business should be directed only to the city's accounts, whether that's email or text. You could, you can also forward any communications that you receive on your own personal accounts that relate to public business, forward those records directly to your city or email accounts, city email or text accounts, so that those are stored by the, the public body being the city. You should refrain from sending emails or text messages to a quorum of the public body, and you should refrain from sending emails or text messages during a public meeting. Those are the two, you know, communicating with a quorum of the public body and communicating during a meeting will create that nexus and actually make you become equivalent to the public body. So there are some frequently asked questions that I had received from some of the aldermen and just some natural questions that come about after this case. And one of the questions is, can the city now search my private accounts or other private locations in response to a FOIA request? And this case law, regardless of, you know, the new changes in the landscape of this case law, the answer remains no. There is no law that imposes any requirement that the city can search the private accounts or private devices of a public official or public employee. The city is merely required to ask the public official or employee whether their personal accounts contain responsive records. Another question is, if I maintain a city-issued device or cellphone, am I still required to conduct a search of my private accounts? And the answer to that question is still yes, even though it is a best practice, as recommended by the case law, to, you know, have a city-issued device and use that city-issued device only, you know, as the sole device for your public business, even if you, you still may be requested via FOIA if you maintain public records on your own personal devices. So that still requires you to conduct a reasonable search of your private accounts for those public records that are being requested. If you have not used your private accounts, you can put that information in the affidavit. But having a city-issued device or cellphone does not eliminate that affidavit requirement, which is the new requirement imposed by this new law, or this new case law. Also, management has informed me and asked that I advise the council for information purposes that the approximate cost to fund city-issued cellphones to the city council is about $10,000. The last question that I think I have for the council is, if there are public records on my personal accounts, is my private information still protected? And the answer to that question remains, as always, yes. And the Better Government Association case highlights this as well. FOIA exempts from disclosure private information, such as financial information, personal telephone numbers, personal email addresses and home addresses of public officials. So that information still remains private. There are statutory exemptions that are listed in FOIA that still apply, and also just a reasonable analysis of what could be deemed private. So the case law has defined private information as highly personal or objectionable to a reasonable person, in which the subject's right to privacy outweighs any legitimate public interest in obtaining the information. So that kind of information that would be highly objectional or personal still remains private and is not disclosed under FOIA. And again, just a final reminder that only those communications that pertain to public business are potentially subject to disclosure. So even if you are, you know, communicating and are sending a text during a public meeting, if you're telling your wife, this meeting is going to go late, I'm not going to be home, or, or you're telling your friend, my fantasy team was terrible, you know, those records are private records. They are not subject to disclosure, even if, even if they were being texted or emailed during a public meeting. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'd like to open it up for specific questions, if any of the council has any.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf, for the presentation and the information. I remember when we received the memo from your offices, and there was a lot of shock and concern. And I think primarily, first and foremost, and the council can agree with me on this, that we are not career politicians, right? We're volunteers. We have regular jobs that we tend to on a daily basis, and this is just a voluntary role. And so the initial shock of this made it concerning, but as the dust settled and the additional information came forth, it's, it's not as bad or as alarming as it seemed initially. Are there any questions from the council? Any concerns? Alderman Sanoyka, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This might be a question for management based off of that $10,000 note. For, so that the council is aware, is that $10,000 consistent with, or does that include the purchase of all of the hardware that would then last for five years or so? Or does that also include the phone service contract for text calls and data? Or is this an annual cost every year for the council to maintain city-issued communication devices?
So that was technically the startup cost, because you are correct, we would have to get new phones, and that's how we calculated it, and that's why it's an average number that we had, because we would look, obviously, for something that would just do emails, texts, and try to restrict what we could and get the best price that we could get. But you are correct, we do not have eight items just floating around, so that is the capital to start the program.
So then my follow-up to that would be, to start, it would be 10,000, and then if we were to pursue having city-issued phones going forward, it would be, it would be a service cost. Is that a service cost that we could then tack on to the, whichever service provider we have for regular city staff, so that it's not nearly as expensive? Or what would be our options going forward?
So right now, we would do governmental, obviously, Verizon is one of those that's governmental, so we would look at that. So we do tack it all onto our bill, because these would be city phones, and I think it goes back to what Alderman Budmat said. We would be getting numbers, and those numbers stay with the ward, and even if someone was to change, it's going to be staying with that individual. But these would be our use for the city of Rolling Meadows, in no matter where it goes, it would be assigned to that ward or to the mayor. And obviously, we're trying to keep it the best rate that we can, and that's why we stay with governmental rates typically.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Then I see Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Bessisi.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I agree, Mr. Mayor, on this is, I think the dust settled, some answers or questions were answered. Just my personal feeling, I am not for this. I am completely transparent, happy to share self-message, things like that. So that's just my personal feeling. I mean, I know this is a personal decision for many council members. I would not be in favor of the outlier for that initial cost or the ongoing one. I'd rather see it allocated to the social worker, if we could earmark the $10,000 to go towards, towards that. So that's just my personal feeling. If we do come down and do this, I guess it would be an individual decision. I would make the decision not to have a city-issued cellphone and incur that cost for myself, but I know it's an individual decision as well. I think we probably could do some additional good with that, that money as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. And, you know, just looking back at the original agenda page, just informational at this time, I hope we're not going to go down some road about making decisions for hardware costs, because 10,000 is a lot, and that's just crazy, especially because we shouldn't be buying phones for the council at $1,000 apiece, for one, and for two, we can assign that money to better use. Alderman Bessisi?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if, would something like, I don't know, Barry or Melissa contacting us to set up an appointment to talk be something that we need to maintain?
Yes, it relates to public business. If they're, they're needing, well, yes, because they would be communicating to, the city of Rolling Meadows would be communicating to you. However, if it's just your communication, you alone are not acting as the city. So technically, it's a public record, but it's not that requisite nexus of your communication to the city. So you don't have to worry if, like Barry or Melissa is texting, or texting you to set up a meeting, that, that communication may fall under a public record, but because it's on your personal device, and it's only you communicating, it's only a direct communication to you, there's not that requisite nexus that makes you the city. So the communication on your own personal device has to, you have to be doing something that makes you other than just a public official, because it's on your, you're on your own device. Now Melissa and Barry, I believe, staff have their, their city-issued phones, so those records are maintained by the city. So their communication to the alderman definitely is, is a public record that could be subject to FOIA, and it's maintained by the city. But your, your response saying yes or no, that's on your device, doesn't have the requisite nexus of the city. But if there was a communication, say, with the whole council, and there was a group text saying, can you guys, can, can the entire council meet for a special meeting on this date? That is, that communication, because it's a quorum of the public body, would need to be preserved because it's FOIAB, but not just the individual communication to one member of the public body.
Okay. And then communications with residents between the aldermen?
Correct. If it's just your communication to a resident, that's your personal communication. What, what you need to do is make yourself the city. So what, what accomplishes that? Communications when you're at a public meeting, so texts right now, if it relates to public business, you know, that's you acting on behalf of the city. But no, your communication to an individual resident, just one-on-one like that, even though it may relate to public business, it's not a public record subject to FOIA.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessisi. I see Alderman Cannon. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I really have no desire to get another phone. I'd rather not carry one in each pocket or carry a holster with one on each side of me. So I really have no desire for that. But I think it's, you know, I think a reasonable thought going forward is that I, I don't think it would be unreasonable for the city to pay each alderperson a little bit of money for the communication devices that they pay for with their own money. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Yeah, phones are busy these days. Any other comments or questions from the council? Doesn't look like there's anything further. Thank you for this presentation, Attorney Wolf. I do understand that we have another topic, the next topic, dealing with the grant agreement and the Salvation Army, and that's also something that you're going to be covering. Do you have a presentation for that, or should I reclaim the screen?
Oh, you can reclaim the screen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So if you want, you can go ahead and begin with the next subject, which is that grant agreement between the Salvation Army.
Yes, thank you. This, this matter is up for the Committee of the Holes' consideration, based upon our previous discussion at the prior Committee of the Hole. And we were looking at the possibility of extending a grant to the Salvation Army in order to provide assistance in the form of COVID-19 relief. And because the Salvation Army already had a program that was up and running, that if there was additional funding provided, could be instituted for residents of the city of Rolling Meadows, we looked into the possibility of being able to do that. And, and so I was able to work with the Salvation Army. I have a proposed grant agreement that's attached to this for the council's review, and we can see if we want to move this forward for further council consideration at an official, at a meeting. One of the inquiries that we, one of the issues that we looked into was whether or not the city could be reimbursed for any funds granted to the Salvation Army for this COVID-19 relief program. And there was communication between staff and Cook County, which is the governmental agency that has the CARES funding and is distributing the CARES funding, funding to the city of Rolling Meadows. One, Cook County has identified that the city's grant to this outside agency would most likely not be covered under the CARES Act reimbursement program. In addition, the, the city of Rolling Meadows has been allocated a certain amount of funding, of which the maximum amount has been applied for, by the city for reimbursement. So the city has essentially exhausted its, its reimbursement amounts that it could get from, from Cook County with respect to CARES funding. So if the council were to move forward with this, they would just know that the money for, to fund this grant program would come from the general fund reserves. And if there are any other questions, I'm, I'm open.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf. I see Alderman O'Brien's hand is up. Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Wolf, just a couple of questions, just to confirm, if we did this as a standalone and didn't do the earmarks, we still wouldn't be able to request reimbursement, is that correct? That's what I was just understanding that you said. So regardless if we earmarked and sent to Salvation Army or administer ourselves, we're maxed out?
So, oh, yes, correct. So we are maxed out, so that there's no more funding that we could request. And Finance Director Gallagher can maybe speak more to that, because I think she's been, you know, Manager Crumstock and Finance Director Gallagher have been working to get all of the reimbursements, but that is my understanding, that, that we couldn't, we can't seek, we can't seek more than the amounts that we've already requested.
Great, and I guess, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Manager Crumstock.
The answer is, we've actually applied for over $316,000, but that's all that we're going to get reimbursed. So we are maxed out on it, and we did work with Cook County, we worked with their consultant who's doing all the other pieces, but we did put in our file for all what we could, and that was part of our discussions, even with the next item that we had, with the discussion, what was eligible, what was actually going to be approved, and this was one of those that they said they did not see qualifications on that.
Perfect, thank you. And I think my other question is maybe just more for discussion amongst the council, is I'm wondering if there's a way, because I thought was, thanks for taking the time, Attorney Wolf, and drafting this up, it read great, is there a way we can put an end date on it, meaning 60 days after the state of emergency ends, from the state perspective? So just in case we still have $15,000 sitting there, that we would get it back, and it could go back into our family assistance program? I don't know if that's the council's idea of this, but since this is specifically being earmarked for COVID, that if we come up with a determination and we can word the contract accordingly, is that we allow, because obviously, people be paying rent, utilities, medical bills post, once the state of emergency is ended, so we'd want to give maybe a 60-day runout period, but if there's still any balance due, that it would come back to us versus sitting at the Salvation Army. I don't know if that's possible, it was just a thought that I had, so we didn't have $10,000 just sitting there earmarked for COVID, well, COVID state of emergency is over, so it just sits versus us getting it back. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that was just for discussion thought, an idea.
Thank you, Alderman Brian. Now, I, you know, I don't, we, we would be donating these funds to the Salvation Army, correct?
It would be a grant of funds to the Salvation Army, and I did have a conversation with Marie Dade from the Salvation Army, and there can be agreements where if the funds are not expended, that they can be returned back to the city. But it's my understanding that there is, as you can see, in attached to the grant agreement, there is the operating COVID-19 relief fund that the Salvation Army has implemented, and the funds are exhausted. So most likely, the funds would be expended, but So most likely, the funds would be expended, but you can put in the grant agreement that if these funds are not expended for COVID-19 related reasons, and and again, they're restricted only to the city of Rolling Meadows residents. The city of Rolling Meadows can get those unexpended funds back.
It just that, you know, just because the state of emergency, that classification may have lifted and ended, it doesn't mean that, you know, the repercussions are not still unfolding for families. And so I
Well, I, that's, I agree with you. I'm not, Mr. Mayor, I'm just saying, six months down the road, though, I mean, if they still can't pay the rent, I'm having a hard time believing that would still be COVID related. So that's why I just tossed out 60 days, maybe even 90 days. I just wouldn't want it to go and we're still paying utilities and things like that nine months after COVID.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? And then we'll, Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in looking at the reimbursement from Cook County for the $316,000, just in my head, the way I look at this is that we're getting reimbursed for expenses, which is all money that's water under the bridge, per se. If if we get it back, that's awesome. If we don't, it's still money that we spent. We're not getting it back. And so to me, the $316,000 in some respects is a gift from the county. And so the fact if we could get this money to this particular program reimbursed or not, doesn't necessarily change the need for for our residents who who would be getting these grants. And so if we've given or if we've made available tens of thousands of dollars for businesses to to get grants at this point in time, I really think, feel it's necessary for us to do this. The Rolling Meadows standard of living will be measured in how well we treat the the most poor or destitute of our residents. And so if if is a, is a, is a city do a great job in funding our businesses, but really don't do a great job in taking care of the our most at need or at risk residents, then our standard of living hasn't increased at all. And so and we're here to make sure that the standard of living is there for all of our citizens and that citizens and that we have a higher average standard of living in Rolling Meadows as a result of our actions. So I'm still going to be pushing that we fund this regardless if it's reimbursable or not. And to my way of thinking, the $316,000 we're getting back from Cook County is in some respects a gift because if we don't get any of it back, it's still money that we spent in fighting COVID. And so all of the people who live in our city who lost money as a result of fighting COVID, they may or may not get reimbursed, but we have an opportunity to serve them. And for those who are most most in need, I really feel like we have a need to, we have a need to serve them as best as possible within our, within our, within our means. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Any other questions, comments, concerns before I look for a straw vote to move this grant forward to council level and a city council meeting? Budmats, I'm just going to lower your hand real quick. And then Alderman Sanoika, floor is yours.
So in the interest of this straw vote, is is it necessary at this time to determine what we would allocate for the grant? Or is this whether or not we want to pursue a grant at all? And then it would be a different conversation to discuss the quantity?
So at this point, I want to get a sense of the council's desire to move this action for the grant forward. At that point, we can either take another one for an amount, or we can have staff tell us, Finance Director and City Manager tell us what what they feel is prudent and what's available at a point that's not going to strain our infrastructure, but also be some sanctity for our residents. So we can take it in a phased approach here for this, but first to make sure that the desire to move this grant agreement forward exists. Does that, does that help?
Yes, it does. No further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns, real quick before I ask for the straw vote? Okay, so then with a quick show of hands, who on the council is in favor of moving this grant forward to the Salvation Army? All those in favor? I see Alderman O'Brien, Sanoika, Budmats, Beniziano, and Bessesi at this time. Thank you. You can lower your hands. And then, thank you. And then those opposed at moving this grant forward? Alderman Diastis and Cannon, thank you. Now, a question for Finance Director Gallagher or Manager Crumstock. Knowing that there is a desire to move this forward, do you have a benchmark number, a financial number that you'd be comfortable presenting to the council? Or do you want the council to present you staff with a number?
So I think that the number that we heard last council meeting was about $40,000 has already been expended. So I think that might be the number. So this way, what has already been used in Rolling Meadows would be covered at least at this point in time. But that might be too high in, but that's where I would start with 40 and then move that down. That's just a recommendation, just sitting here and spitballing.
Okay, and that's what I'm looking for. So thank you. Alderman Diastis, before I call a vote here, floor is yours.
Thank you. I seem distinctly seem to recall that we had talked about 10 or 20,000. I know 40,000 was initially thrown out, but that seemed to be voted down quite quickly. So I feel that that is way too much. And I think the resident, my residents would be very much opposed to me giving away $40,000. So I would not support that.
Okay, you'll have your chance here to express that in a moment. At this time, we're going to take the the benchmark number of $40,000. All those in favor of allocating $40,000 toward this grant to the Salvation Army for our residents in need? I see Alderman Sanoika, Budmats, and Beniziano. Thank you. You can lower your hands. And those opposed? Okay, that's Alderman Diastis, O'Brien, Cannon, and Bessesi. Well, in that case, I'm going to walk it down in increments of $10,000. And I'm going to ask for those in favor of $30,000. That's Alderman Sanoika, Beniziano, and Budmats. Thank you. You can lower your hands. And those opposed to $30,000 to your residents? It's Alderman Diastis, O'Brien, Cannon, and Bessesi. All right, let's go with those in favor of $20,000.
Mr. Mayor, would you be down for 25? That's where I was coming in based on our other conversations. So I'm comfortable with 25. I don't know if we'd get a majority there.
Alderman O'Brien, let's, let's go 20, 26, 5, right? Like, I mean, you know, and just doing in $10,000 increments to go down, $20,000, okay?
I support that.
So if you're in favor of $20,000? It's Alderman O'Brien, Bessesi, Sanoika, Budmats, and Beniziano. You can lower your hands. Thank you. Those opposed to $20,000? Alderman, well, your hands are still up for opposition, Budmats. Okay. So, all right, so then why don't you guys tell me a number, $28,200 then, if that's what we're going to start doing here? So Alderman Budmats, your hands up. The floor is yours.
Let's go with, with Alderman O'Brien's $25,000 number.
Okay, so those in favor, $25,000? We have Alderman O'Brien, Budmats, Sanoika, Beniziano, and Bessesi. Those opposed to $25,000? Alderman Diastis and Alderman Cannon. So Manager Crumstock, Finance Director Gallagher, $25,000 seems to be the the limit here. Any further comments or questions regarding the grant agreement or the amount of money allocated?
No, but we will get that ready for hopefully next Tuesday.
Okay, wonderful. Let's get this show on the road to the next topic here. It's going to be on to the COVID-19 family assistance. So Manager Crumstock, while you're unmuted, you can have the floor here for this one.
So I'll keep this really short. This is just another update from the last committee of whole meeting. We did have more conversations with Cook County and the grant folks. They did not see how we were seeing it in the CARES Act itself about creating a new program. They still thought it was an extension to the current program. So we, as I said before, not much has changed on the temporary family assistance program at the city. We still have outstanding items. You know, obviously, the township is still active. Referrals are limited, but at the same point in time, we have applied to the CARES Act for $316,925, even though we've offered more than that. So if the county ever bumps one of those, after we had numerous long conversations with the grant administrator, but that was also their recommendation to go over that. But at this point in time, staff is not recommending a new program. Just supporting the current one. And this is just an update. So hopefully, that's quick and short. It's a little interesting how the county is still interpreting things.
Okay, thank you, Manager Crumstock for for that. Now, obviously, you don't recommend any new programs. And just sticking with what we've done here for item number four, is there any questions or comments from the council on this? If not, then we can go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the 2020 Census Recap. And Miss Manager Crumstock, you're up to bat again.
I'll keep this as short as I can, but from the write-up, we do want to thank and mention first thing that the census is still going on. It goes until September 30th. The census takers are throughout the committee. Obviously, they're just doing their verifications and other pieces, making sure. We are doing better than the 2010, but it's also been a little bit longer. But with that said, we do want to mention the ad hoc 2020 Census Complete Count Committee that was created. And obviously, two members of the city council are on that, and they can add more to that if they want to. But we do really appreciate Megan and Michael's additional work and Laura and obviously Mayor with all the work that has gone into it. Staff-wise, we kept it kind of limited. And specifically, obviously, myself, the Finance Director and Melissa Gallagher, and specifically Assistant to the City Manager Lori Sezak, because she was doing the monthly or monthly, weekly updates to the grant administrator, plus the monthly updates that we had to do. But we do want to also thank Commissioner Morrison for helping us and Mayor, you know this, with getting a grant that $25,000 was utilized considerably. If you look throughout the committee, there are a lot of green bags throughout the area, but also on the signs that say open for business or takeout, that was actually using census money, too. We also want to thank part-time police assistant Rena Cortez with some of the food drops, food pantry items that we had. She was actually walking around and doing people for the census, too. Not on the list, and I was remiss on this, we also want to thank Police Officer Jason Everett, who actually went to some of the senior living, plus some of the apartments, and was talking about census dropping off posters for us, too. But the idea of this update is also to do the summary that was part of what we had to do with the grant. But for the $25,000, there was about $3,500 in printed material, mailing and postage cards that were actually done. Giveaways really were the biggest thing, and most of those were bags. We're still giving those limited, but that's really to the food drop. And we had different kinds of bags. And we do appreciate the ad hoc committees for supporting all the work that we did. And then the social media marketing, event material for the ice cream socials, two of them that were done recently in August, they were pretty good successes. We have the custom banners. You can see those that were off to the side specifically for that. We do have tablets that we were utilizing. And actually, they have to go into our inventory before we can use them for something else. And then we did provide just some pictures of how things were being utilized. And one thing that I do want to mention, Alderman Sanoika can actually mention this, but I don't know if you can see from the picture, she actually did some spray painting, some really nice tiles out there about the census 2020. And anybody listening, if you have not completed the census, you still have a little more time. It's greatly appreciated. As I mentioned at the end of this, you know, it's August 31st numbers. Obviously, items of interest next week will have a little bit different. But as of August 31st, we were at 79.2%. That's compared to the 77.5% for 2020, 2010 that we had. So again, finalizing the grant has been done, finalizing this. This is the last piece that we had to do, a summary of how we used it, plus what the ad hoc committee actually did. And we do appreciate all the work that was done by the ad hoc committee. And then obviously, if you or Alderman Sanoika want to put more in there, that's more than happy to add to this.
You know, Alderman Sanoika, do you have anything you'd like to incorporate?
I do not at this time. Thank you so much for the great summary, Manager Crumstock.
Thanks, Manager Crumstock. To continue on the agenda, we do have the ERP update. And so for that, we'll turn it over to Finance Director Gallagher. When you're ready, the floor is yours.
You're still up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. In tonight's packet, I'm going to not go through the entire packet in terms of what's in there, but I want to provide the highlights to it since there's a lot of information in there. The city has been undertaking a comprehensive software upgrade called the Enterprise Resource Planning Software, which basically connects our duplicative data sources and spreadsheets and try to combine it into a communication platform that will speak to other departments and also outward facing to residents and businesses. Each module that we've gone through has been tailored to the city's specific needs and wants and customized and built and validated to our needs here at the city. What we do is we take the integration across the city's platforms, and we want to make sure that the reports are there, the data syncs up. And then all the departments are involved in the process. The partner in this technology upgrade is Tyler Technologies. They're the vendor. They provide software to municipalities and school districts. And there's a lot of different types of software that is under that vendor's umbrella. Unis is one of the major software brands. And then we use them for financials. So basically, Tyler Technologies is our vendor. Back in 2017, we approved through city council, approved two resolutions, one with Tyler Technologies for the city software upgrade and one with Baker Tilly Consultants for the consulting work for the ERP upgrade. We've been working diligently over the last couple of years to get things going to that point of being able to connect the other software pieces. Some things have been slowed down due to COVID-19. We had to, when COVID-19 hit, we were pretty much ready to go live with utility billing, as an example. And we had to roll everything back because Tyler Technologies, obviously with most companies, had not allowed any travel. And so being the fact that their their implementation team were always on site, we had to immediately figure out a plan of action in order for us to implement remotely. And that's been done. It pushed us out a little bit. And I wanted to just kind of highlight the project timeline, which is in the packet, which shows you the different phases and what's live and what's set to be live soon. So just kind of going through the packet, phase one was financials, which is the foundation for the entire software project. So that's the general ledger, accounts receivable, accounts payable, the budget module, anything to deal with fixed assets and capital planning. And all of that was, went live April in 2018. All that connects to that, if you think of it as a tire and everything is connecting to the spokes outward to the tire, is work orders, GIS, and also inventory and fixed assets. That was completed last October. And there are some further integrations as continual upgrades continue. Phase three was adjudication hearings and parking tickets, PD tickets. That was through DACRA, and that went live this spring, 2020. And then we will continue And then we will continue a couple of the integrations for adjudication hearings as well. There was a lot of data to be brought over, and so some of the COVID-19, again, delayed some of that. We continue to finish the integration pieces on that. What's live now, and we've had numerous presentations to City Council and to residents to let them know about utility billing, online payments, and e-bills. That's live. Phase Five, which is payroll and human resources, which is really one of the most complex integrations aside from, well, all of them are complex, but this one is extremely complex, given the fact you've got union contracts, you've got non-union pieces, you've got a lot of different old personnel file information, you've got a lot of software integrations and old data to cut through. So there's a lot of integrations that are taking place. We're working diligently right now with our teams in the city departments, and we expect to go live in 2021. We have to go live on a quarterly basis, because we have to, for IRS reporting, we have to make sure our 941 statements go live and on a quarter end. So mid-year is what we're looking at for next year. Phase Six is permitting and licensing, and that's expected to go live in 2021. And that would deal with all our community development modules. And we're excited for that opportunity, because it also has a front facing to our website, and that would deal with anything to deal with business licensing and permitting, and that would connect to our city's website. The packet has some additional information as well, and I also placed this in our weekly notes, so that you did have that. I know there was a couple of comments about the new utility billing software, as far as billing water usage correctly. I just want to make sure that we have been looking into that, and I reached out to a couple of the aldermen as well, let them know that everything is billing correctly. Residents have calls, please just give us a call between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and we can help you over the phone with any type of utility billing questions. There are lots of integrations with this, and making sure that this is done the appropriate way, and managed to be sure that you're integrating all the modules in the order that it should is really important. GIS, which is our GIS consultants, they help us make sure that all the pieces are connected to our address database, and also to the PINS in Cook County. Extremely important to get all those pieces correctly connected, because they also flow to you no matter what module you're working in. That's the connector. For the project budget and cost update, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we're about 57% completed on the project costs for the Tyler Munis contract. And then for Baker Tilly, we're about 75% completed. So we're on track right now. Again, very complex integrations as we're moving through. We're doing our absolute best, and we're very much looking forward to the time that we're completely live with the entire software package. So that is really for presentation, no discussion at this time, unless there are any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation, for the information, and the timeline that was contained in the packet. I think that was extremely helpful to illustrate what's expected to come next down the pipeline. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns from council? Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate. So are we, when we get to the end of this project, are we projecting that it's going to come in on budget, over budget, under budget?
Alderman Cannon, this will come in on budget, because we're trending right now a little bit lower than the budget overall. Because there's less travel, and there's not the in-person travel piece that we have to pay for. And so we're hopeful that we can reallocate some of those dollars to either being unbudgeted, I mean, under budget, or to additional training. Because again, with the payroll HR piece, we are a 24-hour agency, and so we will have to make sure that no matter who's on the clock, they are able to get their training. And we've got a lot of pieces to that. So we want to make sure all the training is there for our staff. Good question, though.
I'm sure everybody's looking forward to getting finished.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Anything else from any other member of the council on this subject? And if not, then we'll continue on now omitting number eight, since we did that earlier, and moving on to item number nine, which is the holiday tree on the city-owned property located on Kirchhoff Road. For that, we're going to defer, who are we deferring to on this? I know Alderman Cannon, you had brought it up, but Director?
Assistant Public Works Director John Carlton has this.
Okay. Then Joellen, whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have prepared for you a report in response to Alderman Cannon's request. And basically, the report put forward to you some of the requirements that would be required to provide the Christmas decorations across from City Hall, namely, the primary expense for this activity would be the electrical expenses that are outlined in the staff report, $3,500 estimated to run the power to the site to provide electrical for any Christmas tree that we might put up at that location. Beyond that, I think we provided some options similar to what we provided last year. I think we, if you recall, we provided some information on a real tree transplant. In that particular instance, we had an offer from a local resident to donate a tree from their yard that was, that they didn't need anymore, and that they wanted to donate to the city for a Christmas tree. Then it was a 27-foot evergreen tree. And we got a cost estimate at that point for landscaper to come in and pull out that tree and relocate it for a cost of $3,600. We think we could get that same quote. We don't yet have a donation offer at this point, but if we were, we think that cost estimate would be reasonable. Another avenue option, too, that we included in the staff recommendation was a live tree nursery install. We know that it's pretty reasonable to assume that we could get a 12 to 15-foot pretty easily. We did locate last year up to a 20 to 27-foot evergreen tree install at that point, that we could also estimate at the same cost of about $3,600. The last alternative that we provided in the staff report was to install a donated 20-foot artificial tree that we do have in our storage currently, in the fire station of a tree that was dedicated or donated by one of our local shopping center management companies, of a 20-foot artificial tree. And we have put that tree together. We know it's possible to install. There's a picture of it included in the staff report. That tree would come without any particular decorations attached to it. But we do have some additional cost estimates for what it would be to have Berry or Berry Landscaping provide the lighting. They would bring it, install it, leave it there, and then take it down and store it for the year. And that cost estimate was for $9,600. So we really just wanted to see, provide a lot of alternatives, and see what the council's desire was to potentially support this request from Alderman Cannon, and then take your direction and see where we want to go with this. So we provided these alternatives and the cost estimates that were included in the staff report, to get some initial feedback from the council before we spend some additional time seeing which direction we want to go. I know last year, when we looked at this particular location, there were some concerns about making investments in this property in the event that we want to put it on the market and make it available for sale. I think one of the considerations that we expressed last year, and again this year, is that if that is still a concern, we could potentially have some conversations with any future buyers that we would place, or have an easement on the property that we could designate that would indicate that the corner portion of the property would be available for an easement for the installation of a tree or their public facilities that we could utilize for now and into the future, in the event council was interested in making sure that this became a long-term designated entrance into the Kirchhoff Road commercial area. So that's something that we can consider as well. But at this point, this is being presented as something that we're looking for feedback from the full council on before we spend some more time figuring out which direction we want to go. So I'm interested in your feedback on the alternatives that were presented in the staff report.
Thank you, Joellen. We'll go ahead and get right to questions, comments, and concerns here. I see Alderman Bessesi's hand was up, so floor is yours.
My question is, is this in lieu of doing what we did last year at the Historical Society? Or is this an additional tree?
I will answer this question, but then call on Manager Crumstock to support this with his response. My understanding is, is that this would be in addition to what I understand is to be the continuation of what we did last year along Central Road at the museum property.
That is correct. This would be a supplement to it. And then again, Alderman Cannon asked for this one to be in our gateway, or if we want to call it. But we are planning to do Central Road Barker, just like what you saw before, with some additional lighting as before, but probably no tree lighting itself, but we will have something out there. But this is just a supplement, additional lit tree for the city of Rolling Meadows.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. I see Alderman Snica, your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before I begin, I want to provide some additional context to Alderman Cannon's request here, because this corridor, as Manager Crumstock mentioned, isn't identified city center from our 10-year comprehensive plan update. And Alderman Bessesi, who has some experience, both Alderman Bessesi and Alderman O'Brien have experience on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and understand the importance of these types of markers for certain zones in our city have value. And so I think that's important for residents to know, like, why we're discussing this item in particular. So for those reasons, since this is consistent with what our 10-year plan is on defining specific areas of the city as economic centers, I'm in favor of this additional work that we're doing. As far as the different funding options that we have available to us, due to COVID, I know that our Community Events Foundation decreased a lot of their programming. Is that a fund that is accessible to the city for things like holiday decorations?
So in the general fund, there is a line item that talks about holiday decorations. So this is above and beyond that holiday direction.
Well, that's in the general fund, so I'm referring to the Community Events Foundation, which is, I believe, not associated with the city. Is that correct?
That is correct. So you're saying, should the foundation pay for this? The foundation is already paying for a lot of different things that we've done over the years. So again, this is a city item that we're having the discussion about.
I understand, but normally, I suppose, I guess, my question before moving on is to understand the relationship between that fund. And I'm asking if that would be a consideration for us for these types of activities?
So not for this kind of tree activity, but the foundation has supported events all the time, and it supported the spaghetti dinner last year, and it supported the tree lighting. It's always supplementing what you see in the budget.
And so then, as a follow-up, since I know that a lot of the programming that we would normally pursue in a year had to be canceled due to the state of emergency. And so is this something that we could allocate funding towards since we had to cancel previous events? Is there a way to transfer those funds from the foundation, or would it be a conversation that the city can have with the foundation, so that this doesn't necessarily have to come out of the general fund?
It would be a general fund thing. It would not be a foundation thing, because again, this would be specifically for the city at that point in time, so it is not a foundation discussion.
Okay. At this time, I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just express some thoughts here. When I proposed this a couple of weeks ago, it was not my intention to have two trees. You know, last year, we moved down to Central Road, because some people thought it was a more, it was an easy solution, which it was at the time. We know we're not going to have the spaghetti dinner this year. Central Road is not the central road of our town. It is a road, but it's not. Anybody that lives west of 53 or north of Kirchhoff had to make a special trip over to see Central. Myself, I went down there twice, and both times I went down there, the lights were off. They weren't even on. It's not the central part of the city. We keep on telling people, or I keep on hearing, the whole nine and a half years I've been an alderman, I hear year after year, what are we going to do to downtown to make it more attractive and get more people down there? We don't seem to ever want to make any investments to make people want to come downtown, or get them to come by. Most of our citizens, at one time or another, shop at Jewel Osco. That seems to be the biggest destination downtown. One of our big restaurants is Don and Now Reps. Other places there, we have, you know, a couple of businesses down there. It is supposed to be the central part of our town, and that's the reason why I was suggesting putting there. I'm not really hung up on what size tree we get. We're going to own the property across the street till at least 2025, the minimum. So I mean, whatever tree we put there could be there for at least five years. And that's where I was coming from. It's not my idea to have two trees, so that's someone else's decision. That's not mine. I think one tree is plenty, and it put it in a place where most people can see it without going out of their way. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. So your intent is to have a single tree in a single location. And since this year, it seems like the festivities around the traditional tree lighting, in which took place last year at Central Road, is not going to take place this year. And so is your opinion that we should relocate the tree to the corner of Kirchhoff and Meadow, because you claim that that's downtown? Ironically, when we are talking about townhomes and not going up there, you know, there were council members that are currently on this council that were here at that debate, saying that this is not downtown anymore. Our downtown commercial center is on Algonquin and Wilkie's. So maybe we should put a tree near Algonquin and Wilkie, if you're trying to do something in a downtown area. So to clarify, since you brought this to the council, you're proposing just a single tree in a single location, and that being Kirchhoff and Meadow, no longer doing anything by the museum, at least this year? Is that what I heard?
That would be correct, Mr. Mayor. And I guess what would go along with that is, you know, all the decorations that we own right now could be used for that tree. We wouldn't have to go out and buy new decorations. We'd have to buy new lighting, because I know we get new lighting every year, no matter where the tree's at.
And so, yes.
Buy another set of decorations.
And so in that case, to that point, it's just a matter of ensuring that there's electrical in this area, and new lighting, and of course, a tree, whether it's going to be new, or the rental that we are, or the faux tree that we already have. So I'm almost seeing that there might be a need to go back to the drawing board, because these options, depending on what the council thinks. First of all, I think we have to have a straw vote here on if we're having multiple locations or a single location, and what the council wants, because that will definitely impact the finances around either or, or both. So after this round of questions, I'm going to ask those questions about where they want trees and how many. So Alderman Cannon, do you have more? Is your hand still up for?
Thank you for listening.
Okay. All right. Then Alderman O'Brien, your hand is up.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually not opposed to the two trees, and it's just an idea to float out there, is I'm in support of the fake one that we do right across from City Hall, our own property, because as Alderman Snica said, that is a valuable piece of property that's sitting there. And not to rehash the past discussions, not wanting to annex any of it back to the city, because that decreases the footprint and stuff like that. Would we ever, is this a time that we get a sponsor? I mean, it's great that they donated it, so maybe we throw a thank you sign up. And I know in the city itself, in Chicago, as well as some other suburbs, they'll say, thanks to Med, because they're giving us the LED light bulbs. Or I don't know if this is a time, because businesses are in economic trouble, too. But is this an opportunity where, I mean, it is $7,500, is that we have a thank you sign for whoever donated it, to recognize them? And if, and I'm totally making this up, School Supply and Gallagher want to throw in $3,000, we give them a free commercial space there. Just an idea that we could.
School health. No, but you bring up a good point. The way we would have actual traction on that is if we had our Community Events Foundation taking care of this and not the city, because the foundation, as you know, can solicit that sort of sponsorship with far greater ease than the city can. So that shifts the conversation as well. So I think there's a lot more dynamics here at play if we're going to try and really fine tune this objective.
Yeah, I'll defer to staff on that, because I'm moved either way. I don't know if it's a call from Barry or Martha as the business advocate, or Lori as the Community Events Foundation. To me, I'm viewing it as the same thing, like, either or, but I'll, I'll let staff decide on that. Because I see, I personally see it as a city thing, regardless of who makes the phone call, but that's just me. If somebody wants to pay us to put up a tree, and we can give them a free commercial and banner, I'm for it, regardless of however it gets done.
Sure. I, I see Assistant Director Charlton, you, you can jump in, and then Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate hearing this feedback. Alderman Cannon, I apologize if we did not capture the initial intent correctly. And Mayor, I'm, I'm grateful for any conversation you would have, because I know Public Works at this point was, was putting all of its resources together for the winter season, anticipating that we would be doing the Central Avenue lighting, and we were already making several additional significant plans to make electrical improvements along Barker in response to some of the deficiencies that were identified from last year's event. So if our event is not going to be held on Central Avenue this coming year, that's important for us to know so that we don't expend resources unnecessarily. So I, I do appreciate your conversation moving forward, and, and we'll respond however you would like us to, but this is an important conversation for us to have at this point, so thank you.
Yeah, no, given the climate, it may be appropriate this year to omit Central Road's activities and the investments on that side, and take the existing resources we currently have available and utilize them at Kirchhoff and Meadow, given the fact that we cannot, unknowingly, it's unforeseen, we, we cannot congregate in that capacity this year as of today. And to that point, we should probably look at just reassigning the inventory we have to this location, because it's just going to be an aesthetic at this point. It's not going to be ceremonious. We, we won't have that. But again, this is a decision the council can make, and that's why I do want to put it up to a vote, whether or not there should be multiple or just the one, and it can just be for this situation at this time, and we don't have to think about next year yet. Let's just cover this one issue at this time. Alderman Budmats, go ahead, and then Alderman Besessi.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm thinking about a, a second location for a Christmas tree. I, I, I was humored to think of the movie, the Doctor, of the Doctor, the Grinch Who Stole Christmas, you know, and how he stole the Christmas tree, thinking that he was stealing the spirit of Christmas from the people in Whosville. And I don't think that by delivering a second Christmas tree, that we're actually delivering Christmas to the people of Rolling Meadows. If we're going to add another Christmas tree for $3,500, I would much rather that we add it to the budget that we had for number four. I'd rather see kids with food in their stomachs than for us to, you know, go past the Christmas, the second Christmas tree, thinking that we've done something wonderful for Christmas, because taking care of our residents would be what's doing something wonderful for them for Christmas. So that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, to this point, I think we might have to just take this topic and let staff know, and depends on the, the decision by the council, though. I, I think, as the mayor of this community, I think it's appropriate that, that we, we forego the Central Road aesthetic and the investment there, and just relocate our resources to Kirchhoff and Meadow for this year, given the current climate, the situation of the pandemic, and everything else, and our finances, and people in, in need, and it's just, it's a more appropriate type of route than what we're, what we're trying to do as if this is a normal point in time. Alderman Besessi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would, I would tend to agree for this year. I would go with the option three of the artificial tree. Potentially Public Works crews doing the work. The eight to 10 man-hours. To do and use that artificial tree that we already own, and then we can take a look at, for next year, or for 2021, yeah, for 2021, going back to Central. I also feel that with the artificial tree, if we feel it has, you know, at least five years' life in it. You know, I, for one, am not interested in keeping that property, just because it's where we have our tree. Though I'd like to sell the whole lot as soon as we, as soon as the TIF and everything is, is over, so. But I would be in favor of just going with the option three, artificial tree for this year, and putting the power in. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Director Horn?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. I just want to, as a point of clarification, I just want to make sure you had mentioned Kirchhoff and Meadow.
Yeah, Kirchhoff and Owl, excuse me.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you.
Yeah, completely. I'm, yeah, I live near Kirchhoff and Meadow, and that's why it's in my head, Kirchhoff and Owl. Thank you for the clarification. My mistake. Any other questions or comments? Only Director Horn's hand is still up. And if, if not, then I'm going to ask the question here. First, how many are in favor of having a tree at the corner of Kirchhoff and Owl? Please show your hands. That's Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cannon, Alderman Veneziano, Alderman Sanueka, Alderman Diastis, and Alderman Besessi. Okay, you can lower your hands. And those opposed? I don't know if I counted Alderman Budmats in there. Maybe I didn't. Okay, next question, then. How many in favor of having the two locations? Kirchhoff Road and Owl, and then Central Road, where we have the festivities down Barker? How many are in favor of two trees?
Mr. Mayor, you said where we have the festivities. Are we having festivities or not?
Well, there's, I mean, there's still decorations, and as you heard from Assistant Director Joel and Charlton, they, they're about to start planning their investment of running electricity down Barker Avenue with some, I wouldn't say significant, but not trivial costs related to decorating that area like last year, but with additions to it, because last, last year was a nice starting off point, and then they realized that they could make some improvements, and those improvements would cost some money. And looking at it then, before COVID, this was the plan, and the plan was to decorate the museum and down Barker Avenue as if like a candy cane lane type of thing. And so that, that's where, that's where staff is currently focused, that on Central Road and Barker, and then with Alderman Cannon's addition, which they believe, staff believed it was in addition to, and Alderman Cannon was thinking exclusively at Kirchhoff and Owl.
Okay, but.
There was a disconnect.
Okay, I understand. The festivities, though, is there going to be a quote-unquote tree lighting or?
No, manager Crumstock said there probably not be a tree lighting. He just said that a couple moments ago, but it would still be decorated, as if it was the same thing minus the ceremony.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, to that point, the, the question was, now, made me lose my train of thought, those in favor of two locations? With our resources being spent at two locations? Those opposed? Since no hands went up? Okay, so those opposed to two locations are Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Budmats, Alderman Besessi, Alderman Veneziano, Alderman Sanueka, and Alderman Cannon. Wonderful. So it looks like we are going to do one location. Now we have the three options here, but I think, can, I'm going to ask staff real quick, Director Horn, Assistant Director Charlton. Can some of these numbers, do they have the ability to shift if we're going to relocate a lot of our holiday resources from Central Road and Barker over here? Is there, is that going to be able to offset any costs that's on, on these options in front of us?
Um, there, there may be an ability to do that. A lot of what we included for having Barry Landscaping do it was because of the, the decorations we're going to be doing in October, and then again, in November for the holiday lighting was going to spread staff thin. There may be some savings. I, I can't tell you at this point what those might be.
But what about decorations that we're looking to buy for this tree at Kirchhoff and Owl, if we now have decorations from the museum area that we're not going to be putting out?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Those are some of the costs we may realize, or we may be able to save.
Yeah, do we have any of those costs factored into any one of these options here, or was that going to come back to us at a later date about the cost it would take to then furnish the tree? Dress the tree?
Joel might be able to answer that. I, I believe that there was some decoration cost estimates provided through a contractor. We did not at all investigate the option that we were not going to be doing the tree on Central Road, so we would have to investigate what we currently have and what could be used for the tree.
Yeah, because I, I see that $13,100 under option three, where it says in decorate, estimated to be approximately $13,000. Now, is this possible savings, because we're just reassigning our decorations from one tree to a, to the one at Kirchhoff and Owl? So can we omit this $13,100 potentially?
Mayor, if I could join in?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. That $13,100 includes the, about approximately $3,500 we need to do the lighting, the $9,600 that we had estimated for Barry Landscaping to come in and do a very nice decoration of the tree, something beyond just putting lights on the tree. So there's, you know, the big bulbs and, and decorations on the tree that they would put up, take down, and then, you know, store and potentially use for next year if we chose to have them come back and do the same thing for the following year. That's kind of the, the gold star treatment. If we want to ask them for something that's, something more than just putting up lights, which we, you know, kind of estimated the $7,500 to be, which is the electrical and just putting lights up that Public Works crew would do on option three, and something a little bit less than the $13,000, we could certainly ask about that, but we don't have a, a cost estimate to share with you at this point. But I think it was somewhere between 35 and 13, if you're looking for something a little bit less than 13.
Well, I'm just, you know, so there's obviously money budgeted somewhere for Central Road's tree to be dressed. That money can now come from that pocket and shift over to this intersection of Kirchhoff and Owl, could it not? Isn't there?
I'm watching Rob shake his head, yes. So I'm going to defer to him, because some of that staff and labor and, and a non-direct cost that I'd like him to comment on.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, you're, you're absolutely correct. When, when you're talking about savings, it, it wouldn't be necessarily a savings as much as just a reallocation of funds that were originally proposed for Central Road would now be reallocated to do the tree only at Owl and Kirchhoff. The six man-hours are, is related to the staffing that would be required to actually construct the tree. That $13,100 was labor, included labor for the contractor to decorate the tree as well. So if we are only having to allocate our resources to that one single tree, then it would be my contention that we would buy the material and install it in-house. So we would use, we would not use a contractor to install the decorations. We would simply buy them with the money we had budgeted to do Central Road.
Yeah, sure, because at some point last year, leading up to the holiday season, the council or staff should have had to request some money to go into, into the Central Road ambiance, and then that ask would have been expected for this year, and that money would have been allocated for it, but it's not happening. So doesn't that money exist that can just be replaced over here? I mean, isn't there?
And I guess that's a, it's a terminology issue. It's, it's, it's not that we're saving money, we're just reallocating it from one location to the other. So to your point.
Sure, because, so yeah, and then like these costs that I'm looking at on this screen, I shouldn't look at them now. I should be talking to you about what you guys had already budgeted to, to work on Central Road, and what that budget is that it's going to carry over to Kirchhoff and Owl.
Yeah, correct. And I, I don't have that exact budget figure right now, but my expectation it wa, is that it would be enough to handle this project. Remember, we were putting a lot of costs here, because this was above and beyond what it was going to take to do the Central Road tree. So that's why we were looking for the extra, but i, it should be sufficient money that's in the budget now to cover the costs that are shown in the memo.
Okay, so what I would like to do, because it's 11 o'clock at night, and there's been an obvious curveball here with this whole thing, is I, I'm going to ask the council if we can postpone this, and staff can come back to us and, and clean, clean this up, not to your fault or anything, but clean this up, and, and take the funds that are currently existing for Central Road, shift them over here, and we should not see some numbers like this, other than hard piping in some electrical conduit into Kirchhoff and Owl, and, and something else minor, because we have funds available for Central Road that we're going to shift over here for this case in, in this one point in time. So council, can, can I ask for a vote to postpone the discussion on this and allow staff to go back and refine things, given the nuances that came out through this discussion this evening? Those in favor of postponing this conversation? Okay, so it looks unanimous with Besessi, O'Brien, Cannon, Budmats, Veneziano, Sanueka, Diastis. And, yeah, so let's do that, and thank you, staff, for, for bringing this up. Thank you, Alderman Cannon, for clarifying your point about one tree location. I think have you helped with the write-up or added a little bit more, it would have not come to this. But with that, let's go ahead and move on to the last component of tonight's meeting, which is going to be the Halloween 2020. I don't know if there's really a name for it, this trunk or treat, or what you want to call it, but with that, I think we'll turn it over to Ms. Lori Sezak, if you're ready.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will be brief. This year for Halloween, city staff is taking steps to put into place additional safety measures for all trick-or-treaters and participating residents. The October utility bill will include a full-page, two-sided colored insert. One side will have a large pumpkin advertising safe trick-or-treating, and the other will include helpful holiday, helpful Halloween safety tips for both families, children, and homeowners. The new 2020 official trick-or-treating hours that were voted on last week will be highlighted from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., will be highlighted from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, October 31st. Other ways to acquire the safe trick-or-treating sign will be for pickup at City Hall and city partnering organizations, or for printout from the city's website and Facebook page. Typical city advertising outlets will be used to get this information out to residents timely and effectively. Next, the City of Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation, Park District, and the city are excited to offer a new safe trick-or-treating alternative that would include social distancing and masks. On Halloween Day, again, Saturday, October 31st, this event would run from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. Also advertised in the October utility bill, this new Halloween kickoff on Kirchhoff event will offer families an option to walk along the trick-or-treat trail, where Kirchhoff Road businesses will hand out candy and goodies from Riverwalk Center and the Rolling Meadows Shopping Center to the Kirchhoff Road Market. Fun characters, including Milo the Mustang, a photo booth, a scary tunnel, and other areas of fun and features will be offered along the trail. Trunk or treat, a DJ, and many autumn decorations will top off this fun day. From our recent research, surrounding communities have not From our recent research, surrounding communities have not yet made any official decision to cancel trick-or-treating this year as they are waiting for a statement from the governor. City staff is confident that this event can be done with safety and health in mind and social distance and mask requirements in place. Parents and children will be looking for safe alternatives, and those interested will follow the precautions in place that day, similar to as they do at the city market. Additionally, this event will effectively draw attention to and showcase the businesses that have been hit so hard this year due to the mandated state closures. Many volunteers will be needed to ensure a great, safe event that day, so please spread the word. Are there any questions about any of these holiday happenings this year?
Thank you, Lori, for that. I, I have a series of, of comments, but I'm going to leave the floor open for the council first. And if not, you know, I'll share my, my thoughts on this. Alderman Sanoyka, then Alderman Venesiano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I received a lot of input from my residents on this item, and they asked me to pass on a couple of, of questions for, for city staff and organizers of the event. Some residents stated concern that this looks like a great event, and so they anticipate individuals and families from other communities coming into Rolling Meadows, which in any other time would be considered a smashing success for our, our community events. But parents are concerned about crowd control and how the event will be, or how the guidelines of the event would be enforced. So if there's a kid who's not wearing a mask, or if there's a family that's not wearing a mask, or if there's just a lot of individuals, are volunteers going to be enough to be able to make sure that this is a safe event?
So we were, we were definitely thinking that obviously many volunteers would be needed to ensure manageability here. One major aspect of this that, you know, that we have in plan was to coordinate about six different starting spots for this event to take place with corresponding colored parking spots. Volunteers would be in each of those parking spots directing guests to their corresponding starting spot. We would do it with a color code system. Obviously, we would be leaning on Public Works quite a bit to help us with effective signage. And that was, you know, our, our big idea in order to avoid bottlenecks and major crowds rushing into one spot.
And, and then the follow-up to that is what, what do we do about intentional non-compliance?
I would say that, you know, we nicely, as if we're at the city market, say, hey, you know, you have to wear a mask. You have to please keep your distance. Otherwise, I'm, I'm sorry that, you know, you, you cannot stay at this event. And from the city markets now, they are not completely crowded each month. But, you know, it's, it's once again managing and really everybody has been very cooperative. Our take is most people aren't going to attend an event like this if they did not know that they were going to be required to practice these safety measures.
So I also have some suggestions that my residents wanted me to pass along on their behalf. And they said, since this is an event that will be co-hosted with the Rolling Meadows Park District, they suggested that since the Rolling Meadows Park District has an online registration system that's already in flight, that as a requirement to have the parking space, families would have to pre-register. And the reason for this would be, one, to anticipate the number of families that are coming. Two, to be able to essentially crowd control it and ticket. So if we know we can have only five hundred people at this event with, with the six different spots for certain hours that that registration's already taken care of, and that everyone who wants to participate as, understands those rules. And they also stated that in the event of an outbreak, that we have a, a point of, of contact tracing, or that this is, would be a database that could be used for contact tracing for the event. These are ideas from my residents that I'm passing on on their behalf. And, and so that's, that's all I will say on, on that issue at this time. I, I don't know if, if, if that's the kind of risk that people are willing to, to if that's the kind of risk matrix that residents are working with, and that's the kind of risk matrix that they're working with, I don't know if the city should necessarily pursue an event if they, if that risk is, is tangible.
In response to the idea with registering at the park district, we could certainly have a serious conversation with the park about that. That's, you know, definitely a good idea and something we can look into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, Alderman Venesiano, I saw your hand, and then Alderman Bessesi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm, unfortunately, I'm extremely kind of disappointed that the city would anticipate and plan an event like this. It's really kind of going against what CDC, IDHP is recommending for the state and the nation not to have large gatherings. Now, I totally agree. It's, it's government overreach to tell a family or parents that yes, no, you cannot trick-or-treat. That's a personal decision. But this is a city, you know, event planned. And you cannot control how many people are going to come. You, we can't control if a person keeps their mask on in a grocery store. And, and so to expect little kids in a very, in a group of trick-or-treating to, to follow, you know, the six-foot rule and to wear masks is unrealistic. And the chances of, you know, in a hundred people, ten percent of those people having COVID, the likelihood is, is high. So to go ahead and plan an event is irresponsible of us as a city. And I had several residents reach out to me that, you know, how could I in my own profession support such an event? And I, I couldn't agree more. You know, when we're specifically directed from the professionals not to do such things. I think it's a great idea to promote businesses and to, you know, promote our community, but it's just not appropriate at this time. Because there is no safe way of doing this, you know, even with spreading it out over a few city blocks, because you will get people from other communities. You will get people that will be COVID-positive, probably asymptomatic, but they will be there. And, and why would we want to invite that into the general population? That's very irresponsible of us. So I, I apologize, but I cannot support this, and I have to agree with my residents on this. Thank you.
If I could respond just briefly, I value that opinion, Alderman. And I guess we're viewing it similar to the city markets, which were, you know, deemed essential this year. We're, we're viewing it as you're moving from store to store, which is similar to moving from booth to booth. It's indeed an outdoor activity. And I guess, you know, for those major reasons, that's why we thought this would be a doable event.
I can, if I may, and I don't want to jump in here on this, but the city market is, is definitely a, a family-oriented event, but the demographic is typically older, and, and this event is geared toward, toward trick-or-treating aged children. And I, I know that their parents and potentially grandparents of, of an older demographic will potentially be there too, who are in elevated risk categories with this. And it's just something that the city should be cognizant of when we're planning events. And I just want to be careful with this. Alderman Venesiano, do you have any further, or should I allow others with their hands up?
Just to, to follow up on that, I, I, as far as the city markets, you know, the attendance is much smaller. And I, and I think that we have to all agree that the attendance on this kind of event would be a, a much larger scale just due to the nature of the event. And again, like what Mayor Gallo said, the demographics. And, and, and I think to say that the city markets are essential, absolutely. Buy food, you know, whatnot. Candy for Halloween is not essential. I, I, I'm sorry. So, um, you know, that's, you know, just another reason to, to say that it's really not appropriate. Thank you.
Alderman Bessesi, then Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of looking at this event, even though it is outdoors, to be very similar to an event that I've been involved with for a long time, which is the Dr. Seuss's birthday at the library. I think attendance will be similar with that type of, of an event. That event draws several hundred people. So I just wanted to get that out there so that people understood when we're talking about this. We're not talking a hundred people. We're talking several hundred people. I, is my anticipation of this. I also really like the idea that, I guess it was a resident or something proposed about tickets. I know the library for their event does tickets because they can only have so many people in the building at a time. So I'm thinking with this, if we can only have so many people you know, going through, that tickets might be a way of doing it. Should we decide to do this? So that, just wanted to put my two cents in there.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to go, I, I heard from a handful, as I mentioned last time, actually about two dozen folks that had reached out, and they are all in favor of this. Is that even the ones that were not in favor said, hey, that's my decision not to go. So from the majority of the residents I heard from, they supported, they actually thanked us for moving forward an idea for this. I'm not opposed to checking into the registration. I guess my only question on that would be we're going to have people that show up that aren't registered. So then do we turn them away also? Or do we give them an opportunity to register onsite if our numbers don't hit whatever maximum could be? I'm not opposed to the registration. I just don't know what additional type of work it might require. But from my side, the, the, again, the twenty-four, twenty-six people that had reached out, majority were in full support saying, thank you. It's our decision if we want to pursue this, just like going door-to-door. And the other ones that just said, hey, I'm not in favor, so I'm not going to take part. So just from, from the residents that got back to me, that was the feeling, that majority were very thankful, saying it's on us to, to do it if we choose to. But thanks for giving us the opportunity to make that decision.
So thank you for that, Alderman O'Brien. The, the one distinguishing difference between that trick-or-treating outdoor-to-door, from house-to-house, resident-to-resident is that it's not sponsored by the city. And the optics on this can go either way depending on the outcome of it. I had a resident come up to me and say, if, if somebody gets COVID, there, are they going to turn around and sue the city? And I don't have an answer to that. And I don't want to say something like, well, prove they got it from going to that event, right? Like, I don't want to do that.
I think Attorney Wolf can weigh in on that. There's legislation that, like, you can't sue somebody for getting the flu at the office or strep. I think we're covered.
Please, that's twice now you've interrupted me in this, in this meeting. In other meetings, you do the same. Just hold on a moment. But that got me thinking, and again, you're talking to the guy who still wants to promote remote meetings because it's appropriate and we have the tools to do so, and we're not sacrificing anything other than the physical proximity to one another. In the eight years that I've had my kids and taken them trick-or-treating and been involved in the events in the City of Rolling Meadows, we've never hosted a Halloween event in those eight years. And now this year we are, and I don't know if that's the right time to host a Halloween event or not. But I do know that it's going to, we're funneling people into a place of closer confinement where trick-or-treating is already a quasi socially distant activity. It's groups of kids that are usually siblings or close friends that run a house-to-house. And, you know, if you are trick-or-treating this year, either you are or you are not. Either you're handing out candy or you're not, right? But in this case, we're hosting something, and is that the most responsible thing to do in this? In this time? That, that's, that's the question. Is it the most responsible thing to do in this time? And I totally agree that for business's sake, we should get out there and find mechanisms to boost local business, et cetera. Absolutely. But I don't know that this is the right mechanism, given the situation of it. And, and I just, that's what I need to emphasize publicly now, because I've expressed it through a series of meetings with Manager Comstock, that I'm reluctant to, to see this event take place. And I'm reluctant because I don't know what I don't know in terms of how it's going to turn out. Knock, knock on wood, I hope that just it's another outdoor event and everyone has a great time and goes away. But I, I don't, I wouldn't want to see one person contracted and have some sort of issue as a result. Wouldn't feel right about that. Couldn't feel that.
So is that what we need to do then, Mr. Mayor? Do you want to take a straw poll to see if we even do this? Even though like two weeks ago, there seemed to be support for it, and now we're going to go in a different direction? I don't know what.
I've never been in support of this, so I don't know who is in support of this. I can't, I don't know who, who that is. That's in support of it. So we can take that straw vote if necessary. I just, I don't, I, I don't know why we continue to proceed. I'm, I'm planning this given the current state of everything. And now it makes me feel like I have to be the stick in the mud to say it out loud when I, I was trying to express my reluctance privately so that it, it wouldn't come to this point. Alderman Diasis?
Take a straw poll, see what the, see what the council says.
Sure. All those in favor of, of having this Halloween festivity? It's Alderman O'Brien, Diasis, and Cannon. Thank you. You can put your hands down. All those opposed? It's Alderman Budmats, Bessesi, Venesiano, Sanoyka. And I know I don't get a vote per se, but I am, I am not in favor of a city sponsoring an event where we funnel people together. And so staff, I think you see a majority are inclined to not host an event of this caliber. It's not that it wouldn't be a fantastic event. I think it's something we should absolutely do. It's just not the appropriate time to do it. Alderman Bessesi?
Yeah, um, one thing I do want to mention, it is already advertised on Facebook and various other social medias that this is happening. So somehow we'd have to get the genie back in the bottle.
I don't know that it's that big of a genie. To be honest with you, I don't know. I don't know.
Okay. I just thought I'd mention it. Bye.
Bye.
I'm sorry. It's getting late.
Alderman O'Brien?
So, so just to confirm that, and I, I mean, that's the decision of the council. We'll move in that direction, but so trick-or-treating is still a go? I mean, to give staff direction, if we're going to at least promote the smiley pumpkin faces to go on windows, that's a point forward, but.
So here's the thing, trick-or-treaters always have this mechanism where you participate, your lights on. You don't participate, your lights off. Like, there's always been rules around this. We don't need to reinvent these rules.
And that's what I'm just asking for the direct, I mean, so the trick-or-treating, since we did, it came to the council to adjust the hours. So I know it's not city-sponsored. That is so important, but there is no event.
No, that's the thing. The city can't tell the community you cannot trick-or-treat. Like, that, the city municipality can't do that.
They have another. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, you could, I mean, you could, right? Like, okay, so it's late too, so forgive me, but that's, that's not. Trick-or-treating is an individual choice, and it works both ways on that person going out, getting candy and the person doling out the candy. You either do or you don't, you know? It's just that simple. But to sponsor a city event in this climate is, in my opinion, it's not appropriate for the potential of jeopardy that you can create. And if you can, I think that's too much at this time. But that, again, that's me and I, the city, I, I can't deal with that. I don't want to deal with that. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think that this is that important to host an event when kids who want to trick-or-treat, they will trick-or-treat, and the houses that want to host those trick-or-treaters will host those trick-or-treaters. And those who don't, don't and won't. And that's, that's the end of it. But to do any more than that is
It just got voted down.
Too much. So I, this is, this is where, where we stand with it. And so staff, I, I appreciate the, the work on. And so staff, I, I appreciate the, the work on it. I think we should do something in Halloween, absolutely, cuz I'd love to take my kids there, but I don't think that this is the year to do it. So, um, with that, if there's anything further on this topic, raise your hand now, otherwise I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Alderman Budmats, thank you. Alderman O'Brien. Now Judy, we do have to do a roll call vote for this. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, I'm still here.
All right.
Cannon.
Here. Yes.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Venesiano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes, good night.
Yes, this.
Good night.
Good night, Sanoyka.
Yes.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. This meeting's adjourned.
Thanks.